Welcome. On behalf of Mayor Pro Tim Clark, Manager Madrid, my fellow commissioners, welcome to our meeting of Wednesday, February 27, 2019. It is now 9:00 a.m. Madam Clerk, would you please call roles?
Honorable Sanger Whitehead?
Here.
Honorable Happy Clark?
Here.
Honorable Walt Heschler?
President.
Honorable Paul Buckland?
Here.
Honorable George Segetti?
Here.
Madam Mayor, I'm here. Thank you. At this time, I'd like to ask everyone to please join me for 15 seconds of silent meditation. Thank you. Commissioner Heschler, would you please lead us in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, with equal rights and liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. The next item on our -- excuse me, the next item on our agenda is the approval of the agenda. We have a motion to approve the agenda.
I'll make that motion, Mayor.
I have a motion to approve the agenda. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second. Any questions, comments?
Mayor, if I may?
Sure.
My presenters may not be here on time. There is an emergency on the interstate. They're stuck in traffic. They've held the traffic. I just got a text that they're still in the Lincoln exit trying to make their way this way. So Mr. Lassich may not be here until about a half hour later than normal. So I'd like to ask that we be able to interject him into our program as soon as they arrive, if possible.
Thank you. Is there any questions, comments?
I have no problem and then a motion for that.
Thank you. So we will move Item E1 under Presentations to whenever the presenters are available. The next item on the agenda is public comment. Oh, excuse me. Do I -- I have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Motion carries. Excuse me. It's early. Okay, the next item on our agenda this morning is Item C, comments from the public. I ask that anyone that would like to give public comment, please approach the podium, give your name and address. And if you have any documentation that you would like of record or to give to the commissioners, please place it in the little black box next to the podium. And is there any public comment this morning?
Good morning.
Good morning.
My name is Stephen Rice and I'm Director of the TRC Housing Authority. My address is 108 South Cedar. That's a business address. Just for a public comment, the New Mexico Mortgage Finance Authority is in the process of doing a five-year committee housing needs survey. So I just wanted to bring that to your attention. I have some flyers here that have a link to complete the survey. That's for their plan for state funding and whatnot. So, here's flyers.
Thank you, Mr. Rice.
There may be I can email the board the link.
Thank you. We appreciate that.
Thank you.
Is there any other public comment this morning?
Ed Williams, 707 Carmen Williamsburg. I just wanted to give kudos to the employees that you have and future employees that you may get. They're doing a great job in the circumstances that they have to work with. So I hope that they continue to have your backing and that you continue to help them push forward in their endeavors and get them, you know, whatever it may be, whatever their task may be, get them completed. Thank you.
Thank you, Ed.
Ms. Townsend, Desert View Inn and Chamber of Commerce. Commissioners, Mayor, City Manager, I'd just like to maybe jog minds a little bit. It seems that we are always in the process of losing qualified people. And I think that we don't recognize a lot of the qualifications that we have around us. And we're very lucky that qualified people retire here and offer services. And all too often those services are not looked on professionally. And one of the things that sticks in my throat is the golf course. I live two blocks from the golf course. We had a great golf course out there. And for political and personal reasons, because somebody's not like personally, we ignore the professionalism. And that is an offense to me. Howie Tucker has now gone to Roswell. And he'll be appreciated there, I'm sure. A lot of people have gone to Roswell. We lost our airport manager to Roswell. It's not a good thing that we don't appreciate the people we have. I understand Melissa has gone and was very good, too. And I think that's something that we must be making mistakes somewhere. And it doesn't bode well for the city. And I think it should be less that the personal feelings are more professional. And we'd do a lot better that way. The golf course, if things are not done this month, we won't have a golf course this year. There's a lot of things have to be done very early in the year to make sure that you have a green golf course. And I don't really think that the people who are running that golf course know what they're doing. I watch it nearly every day. I drive by there. And it's just sad that we're going that direction. When we throw away our advantages all too often. And it's very sad. And it means that we're not always looking at the best thing. We're sometimes looking at other things. And that bothers me. I hope we can do a little better. I'm hoping we've got a new bloom and we'll look at things in a different way. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Townsend. Do you have any other public comment this morning?
Good morning.
Good morning.
I'm Janice Gray. I just wanted to introduce myself to the Commission. Most of you I know. And I want to thank Mr. Madrid, our City Manager, and Mr. Heckler for the work that they're doing with the golf course. I'm on your agenda this morning to be appointed to the Golf Course Advisory Board. And I'm hoping that you approve that. With what Mr. Townsend just said, I think Bart that we have at the golf course is trying his best to do a great job. And I'm hoping that the board will get behind him and help. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Gray. Next public comment. Come on down, sir.
Michael Hoag, 516 Austin Street, Apartment 3, TRC New Mexico, 8701. Your Honor, hello, Commissioners. I speak today on behalf of the Matthew 25 Food Pantry. First and foremost, the Food Pantry thanks the city for their grant of $7,200 for the 2018-19 grant year. The $7,200 exactly covers our monthly rent for a full year. This allows the Food Pantry to allocate a larger portion of our private donations to purchase food for distribution. We manage closely to our budget. Currently, for six months of the grant year, we have a profit of $24.51 against a budgeted projected loss of $450. Matthew 25 is an all-volunteer organization. And so far this year, there are 511 households representing 912 individuals enrolled in the Matthew 25 Food Distribution Program. This includes 202 children. Seventy percent of the households and individuals receive food stamps. Through January of this year, Matthew 25 distributed food baskets to 5,415 individuals. This includes 827 individuals living in public housing whose food baskets were delivered by volunteers. It also includes 292 food baskets for individuals under emergency circumstances. Since 2014, Matthew 25 has distributed food baskets to over 32,000 families representing over 64,000 individuals. Thank you for your time. And again, thank you for your support of the Matthew 25 Food Pantry.
And thank you. Do we have any further public comment this morning? Any further public comment? Seeing none, we will move on to Item D, response to public comment. Do I have any response this morning to public comment? Commissioner Bart?
There are a couple of things that I think are extraordinary. And I think that our housing with Mr. Rice, I want to appreciate everything that you do for our community. Matthew 25 is a remarkable organization. And I've seen those lines every Thursday morning for years. And I think that's a remarkable thing that we do for our community. And Mr. Williams, if you hadn't stood up, I would have repeated your exact words. So thank you for that. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Commissioner Clark. Is there any further response to public comment?
I want to make one comment which will be helpful. Maybe explain all the Commissioner Clark's comments regarding the Matthew 25. I heard the word grant and donation. And actually, where was the money provided pursuant to a contract we're receiving services in exchange for money? So I want to make sure it's clear. It's not a donation. It's not a violation of the anti-donation code. What we're doing is part of the contractual relationship we have with Matthew 25.
Thank you. Thank you, Attorney Rubin.
If I may, just one other comment and kind of echoing Commissioner Clark's. And yeah, it is sad that, you know, we lose people to other municipalities and jobs that can pay more than what we can afford to pay our people. And that is a problem. But I think it speaks highly of the quality of the people we have working for the city, that so many of them go on to jobs, you know, in larger towns where, you know, essentially they are being promoted into a better-paying job. And I think that speaks very well of the quality of people we have working here in the city. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any further response to public comment? Hearing none, we'll move on now to Item E. I see that our presenters for Item E1 are still not here. So we will move on to Item E2, presentation related to a footbridge across the river. Mary Jo Fall, Hornado Resource Conservation and Development Council, and Gina Kelly. I guess Mary Jo's just here by herself.
Yes, Gina couldn't come.
Welcome.
Good morning, Mayor Whitehead and Commissioners. Most of you, I believe, know me. I'm Mary Jo Fall. I am currently the Executive Director for the Hornada Resource Conservation and Development Council. It's a long name. We call it RCND. It's a nonprofit that works with natural resources and also rural economic development. And I've been on that board since the late '90s. I served on that board when I worked for Sierra Soul Water Conservation District also. And I'm coming to the Commission because I was approached by John Masterson from the brewery. He is with a group of runners that would like to see if I could help them secure a footbridge over the river so they would have access to more trails on the other side. And so our initial meeting, we just kind of talked about what they wanted to do, where we could possibly do that, what kind of access would that give the runners. He represents about 50 people that I've already told them they would like to do that. And so we've had several meetings with the Village of Williamsburg and the City of TRC Representation and the City of Alphambeute to talk about how we could do this collectively as a group and how would that, if we did put bridges, how would that enhance our whole community? And so what we have in the back of our mind is, well, not in the back of our mind, but what our potential plan would be is to maybe do a footbridge, and strictly a footbridge, over by Rotary Park, where we could get to the other side of the river and get on the road. And then you can get on public land. Those of you who know that, that part of the river where the low-water crossing is, and past that is pretty much BLM, Bureau of Reclamation Land. So then that's public access and public land. And then we'd go down to the bend in Williamsburg and build another one to come back so that we could get a bigger loop. And that would encourage some development and activity in the Village of Williamsburg. So that's why they've been participating with us. Now, I'm coming to the city, and I talked to Mayor Whitehead about this, when, those of you that know about the Healing Waters Trail, I don't know if all of you remember that, that's a three-mile loop through town. And the Hornada RCND, Sierra Soul Water, and when Gina Kelly was here, she was the Tourism Director for our Tourism Board, we got together from a group of people that wanted to do different things downtown. They wanted to capitalize on the Hot Water Springs, down by Rotary Park. We wanted to get some burgers. And we just wanted to have a way to improve the health. And so we developed that three-mile loop. Now, the way that we did that was through a gentleman that was provided to the city through, there's a program with the National Parks Service that's recreational conservation trail assistance. And that is really, it's not a grant to build trails, but it is a process to get a person to come down and help the community develop a trail system. And so the city applied for that. Those applications are due in June. And so we got a gentleman came down here. His name is Attila Ballerty. He's based out of Albuquerque. And so he came down and we had numerous meetings. We worked with all the stakeholders, the fishermen along the river, and the veterans home because maybe they could participate. We worked with the Veterans Museum. And we worked with the Hot Springs District. And we worked with the John Mo Springs Museum. And we had lots of meetings and developing stakeholders and tried to lay out the trail itself. And so through that process, it took about a year planning, you know, planning takes forever. But he helped us figure out the best route. And so that three-mile loop starts at John Mo Springs Museum, goes down along Persing, I think in my mind, ends up at Rotary Park. And then that's all along the street and on sidewalks. Then we get to Rotary Park. And then we have a dirt trail. And we have, you can go from Rotary Park over a footbridge to the other side of the road. And then we have a dirt trail with some benches and picnic areas up on top. And so it makes a loop, ties into the Veterans Museum, and then comes back down and makes a loop all the way back to John Mo Springs. And through, actually, he helped us design that. And then Gina Kelly and myself, we helped to secure a grant to do those amenities. So the trail that we have in place right now is all on city land. And what we were thinking, if part of that development and that meeting with the National Parks Service, he had a lady, a young lady working with him that developed a master on our community and wrote a 200-page document and talked about historic places. And she actually developed a schematic for the little wetland area down by Rotary Park. And so that is something we thought about we need to do at some point. But if we could really develop Rotary Park and put the wetland back, and we could have burgers come, and we could really enhance that area, and then if we had the footbridge to go over, then it also ties into the Rio Grande Trail. That is a new big process because then we'll have it on the other side. And then you could go down that road and encourage more healthy living. But there's a lot of people that are expressed an interest in it. So right now, if Mayor Stubblefield felt since the first initial work, we would do, the first footbridge would be within the City of TRC limits. And then she would, if you need the village to coapply, she said that they could probably do that. But I wanted to come to the city first. So as I said, it's really just a form you have to fill out. And it's due in June, I believe. And then the city could participate. And it doesn't cost you anything. And then a person would just come down and help us put together a good plan. And then we could start looking for funds to develop it. So that's kind of the gist of it.
Thank you, Mary Jo. Are there any comments, questions, Commissioner Clark?
Mary Jo, several years ago, myself was looking into putting into a bike path. And I looked into doing a footbridge across that would be foot and bike. So I can't think of anything better. And I know that Clerk Canton had looked into a couple of things for me when we were looking into that. I know you'll have a lot more support if we know that it's foot and bike.
Right.
And--
Just not motorized. I mean, no ATV. So it would have to, or horses. We don't want horses going over that either.
Probably not.
But they might. But we'll say no.
But the combination of the two is really quite popular now, is the foot and bike.
Right. And he has a lot of bikers in his group, too, Mr. Masterson.
Yeah. Well, I'm one of those kind of people, too.
Oh, good.
But the question I have, one of the things that we were running into that were kind of a little bit of a problem was getting the easements from the VOR, EBID, and the BLM.
So I've talked to all of them.
And they're all willing to work with us.
They're all on board. So if we go across, this is kind of our preliminary thoughts. If we go across at Rotary Park, where the VOR puts a bridge in now during the wintertime, kind of not up at the upper end, but at the lower end, that belongs to the Shepherd Group, that land. Now, and we were doing the Healing Waters Trail years ago, and that's 2008 is, I think, when we got that bid. They were excited about the trail, too. So Mr. Masterson has spoken to the representative. He's all in favor of the trail. So what we're thinking we could do is we could get the footbridge over. They would give the city, it would have to be the city, an easement. And we would develop a trail to go across his land over to that road. Now, the one thing I didn't double-check before the meeting today is that's a county road or is it not a city road, correct? Do you know right now?
I don't think--
I remember--
I don't think it is.
Well, a lot of it's city on the other side until it gets to a certain point.
To the low-water crossing.
Oh, yeah.
And so from there, that's mostly Bureau of Reclamation Land. I've been in contact with Brett Canty and their recreation person. They were okay with it. So I didn't go much further than that. We probably want to make sure we talk to the BLM because they have permities there, too. Just not that we need their permission, but that we want them to be on board and support our effort. But that would be the only thing is would have to, if we can get the Shepherd Group, and they've expressed their support, so we can get across his land and then get to the road. And then you're on the road. And then after the low-water crossing, what I'd like to do is have the VOR and the BLM let us designate and develop more trails below there. The land where the road goes on the other side of that road is Armaderis. And so they really don't want to give us an easement for the trails. And there are a number of trails already in place there. But, so we would try and direct people to go down to the public land and then have more, actually, develop trails there. It would be the long solution.
So my memory, Ms. Falls, is that the Shepherd Group wanted a road going across.
They wouldn't--
They want to drive.
Yes. And they probably still want to do that for their--
That would be separate.
That would be separate, right. This would just be a little footbridge, a foot and bicycle bridge. So they were all in favor of that. At this point now, as we go forward, they didn't express any obstacles the first time or this time. So I don't see that as a hindrance to furthering that. And, you know, then if you have more trails, we don't, I don't think we advertise the Healing Waters Trail enough. A lot of people really like to do that. And they tell me at the spas that their guests really enjoy the Healing Waters Trail. So we had another opportunity. I think it would just encourage more, I believe we could get more economic development. If we could loop it into the village, then we would have a really good, you know, we could do more down at the village and develop that and have a really good recreational area for visitors to come and use. I'm not going to walk it, but I'm not one of those walkers. But I just, so I just am kind of the leader of the meetings. So anyway, I just hope that you guys would apply. And I'd be glad to help you and Gina would, too, because we went through the process through the city before. So--
Mayor, do we need to put this back on an agenda?
I was fixing to ask Manager Madrid if he had any questions or comments, if he could get with Mary Jo and kind of look over the agreement, the--
Right. There's just a form that we need to fill out. It's on our website. But I could print that out.
That's exactly what we should do, Mayor. If Tammy, raise your hand. You'll get together with Tammy. She'll put it on the calendar and--
Great.
We'll start the process.
Okay, great. So we'll have plenty of time to get that cemented. So this would really be exciting.
You said in June.
I believe it's due the first week of June.
And then we at the city would probably take the first step to the footbridge at the Rotary Park.
I think so.
And then later on down the road, the Village of Williamsburg would come in and put their footbridge, correct?
Right, right. That, we could apply for funding for the footbridge. And in the meantime, we'd be having a meeting with all the stakeholders. And then Mayor Stubblefield wants me to go to the village because we think there's a few things that they could really take on to really do a lot more to enhance their area. And then we could really have a good recreation. And also, the hospital would like to tie into our trail. So I think I figured out a way where we could have a trail up to the hospital. So it would really link them more to the community and not just be this building up on the hill. So they want to do that, too. So we'd have just a thriving trail--
Nice.
--bunch of people.
Thank you, Mary Jo.
Okay, thank you.
And we'll be in touch. Okay, thank you, dear. Okay, the next item on our agenda, one of our guest speakers is here, but the other one is, we're still waiting on him from Virgin Galactic. So we will go on to our next item on the agenda, which is Item F, the Consent Calendar. This morning, the consent calendar consists of a long list of items. So bear with me as I read them. The first item is Item F1, City Commission Regular Meeting Minutes of January 9, 2019. F2, City Commission Regular Meeting Minutes of January 23, 2019. Item F3, Public Utility Advisory Board Regular Minutes, October 15, 2018. Item F4, Public Utility Advisory Board Regular Minutes, November 19, 2018. Item F5, Lodger's Tax Advisory Board Regular Minutes, October 25, 2018. F6, Golf Course Advisory Board Regular Minutes, December 12, 2018. F7, Golf Course Advisory Board Regular Minutes, January 2, 2019. F8, Library Advisory Board Regular Minutes, January 28, 2019. Item F9, Accounts Payable, January 2019. Item F10, Second Quarter Reports for Lodger's Tax Grant Recipients. Item F11, Regarding Appointment of Daniel Mena to the Housing Authority Board. F12, Appointment of John Jack Noel to the Library Advisory Board. F13, Appointment of Claudia Rains and Janice Gray to the Golf Course Advisory Board. Item F4, Appointment of Gina Kelly to the Lodger's Tax Advisory Board as Tourist Services Member. F15, Appointment of Don Armijo and Gil Avilad to the Public Utility Advisory Board and Impact Fee Board. F16, Approve the Annual Law Enforcement Protection Fund Application. Are there any items on this consent calendar that need to be removed for separate comment? Or can we approve them all at one time? Do I have a motion?
Mayor, I'll make a motion to approve the consent calendar as presented by yourself.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
A second, that motion, here.
I have a motion and a second to approve this consent calendar as noted. Is there any further questions, comments? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, sign. Motion carries. Thank you. It's a long list. All right, the next item on the agenda this morning is Item G, Ordinance Resolutions and Zoning. Item G1, Discussion Action, Resolution Number 2708, 2018-2019, Confirming the City of Truth or Consequences to Participate in the Development of Transportation Municipal Artillery Program, Local Government Road Fund Program. Tracy Burnett.
Good morning, Mayor. Mayor Pro Tim, Commissioners. NMDOT Project Oversight--
NMDOT Project Oversight Division is soliciting applications for the Department's Municipal Artorial Program, or MAP Fund, as it's called, for fiscal year 2020, 2021. Uh, the purpose of the MAP program is to assist municipalities in project development, construction, reconstruction, improvement, maintenance, repair, right-of-way, material acquisition of, and for streets, the principal extensions are for rural state highways and other streets, not on the highway system, but maybe connecting to a main arterial roadway. So we would like to put in an application for a project that would include Smith Avenue, Silver Street, and Ninth Avenue Loop. Um, as y'all know, Ninth Street is on our ICIP, is right there in front of the hospital, and then it would go up Silver, connect into Smith, and back out onto Date Street. So we would connect to the main highway. Um, it does meet all the general criteria and the resolution is a part of the application process. So at this time, I stand for any questions?
Do we have any questions, comments, concerns on Resolution Number 27, 2018, 2019? Manager Madrid, comments, concerns?
Very straightforward. A resolution is required for the application. The area has been identified as a priority, uh, previously by the city. The resolution is basically a formality for the application. I recommend your approval, Mayor.
Thank you. Do I have a motion to approve Resolution 27, 2018, 2019?
Mayor, go ahead. I'll make that motion. I'd like to move that we approve Resolution Number 27, 2018 slash 2019, allowing the city of truth or consequences to participate in the Department of Transportation Municipal Artillery Program Local Government Road Fund Program, as presented by Tracy Burnett.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
I have a motion and a second to appro, approve Resolution 27, 2018, 2019. Is there any further discussions, comments, concerns? Madam Clerk, would you please call roll?
Honorable Senator Whitehead?
Aye.
Honorable Rob Heschler?
Yes.
Honorable Kathy Clark?
Yes.
Honorable Paul Baca?
Aye.
Honorable George DeGeng?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries.
Thank you.
The next item on our agenda this morning is item G2, Discussion Action, Ordinance Number 701 for Publication Approving the Land Use Assumptions and Capital Improvement Plans Final Report. Tracy Burnett, our Grant Projects Coordinator and Building Official.
Mayor, Mayor Protem, Commissioners. Uh, this time, we're requesting for the commission to approve Ordinance Number 701 for publication. Our Impact the Advisory Board has recommended the Impact the Study, uh, to go to the commission. You guys reviewed that at the previous commission, and this is the next step. Uh, it has been reviewed and approved by both city attorneys, uh, J. Rubin and John Appel. So at this time, I stand for any questions?
Thank you. Questions, comments, concerns? Manager Madrid?
This item is for, um, publication. It's part of the process in amending, uh, the ordinance. So it is not the final action for this. It is just for publication so that we can solicit any concerns regarding the change in the ordinance. Recommend your approval.
Thank you. Do I have approval to approve Resolution Number, or do I have a motion to approve Resolution, uh, or Ordinance Number, excuse me, 701 for publication?
I'll take that motion. Um, I move to, uh, approve, uh, for publication, Ordinance Number 701, Approving the Land Use Assumptions and Capital Improvements Plan Final Report, as presented by Tracy Burnett.
And do I have a second?
Senator Mayor?
I have a motion and a second to approve Ordinance Number 701, as noted and presented by Tracy Burnett. Do I need a roll call or can this just be a, all those in?
Yeah. You'll need a roll call.
Okay, thank you. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Tracy. The next item on our agenda this morning is item H1, or H, Unfinished Business, H1, Discussion Action, Potential Ordinance Related to an Increase for Elected Official Salaries. Mayor Protem, Kathy Clark?
Um, so this is something that we've been talking about on and off the last couple of months, and, um, Attorney Rubin was going to help me with this one, so if you don't mind, Mr. Rubin.
I have a quick handout. It's only a one sentence thing to show everybody here. This is a constitutional provision.
Okay. Thank you.
What I handed out to everybody is, um, Article 4, Section 27 of the Mexican Constitution, and it reads as follows. Uh, "No law shall be enacted to give any extra compensation to any public officer, servant, agent, or contractor after service rendered or contract made. Nor shall the compensation of any officer be increased or diminished during the term of office, except as otherwise provided in the Constitution." Uh, the important thing to note here is it talks about during the term of office. What we have talked about is passing an ordinance that would, uh, raise the salaries of commissioners if it were for a later term. It would not be for the, uh, the term while the commissioner has paid the debt and during their current, uh, current term. Uh, we've talked about perhaps that we would have is it become uniform in 2022, where all five city commissioners at that time would have experienced the increase in the fact we do look for increase. So, um, assuming we are taking a position that we are, we'd be increasing salaries in a future, for a future term, I don't see a problem. This constitutional provision would be, uh, it would be a problem.
So the, the question was, do we raise it for the three that are coming up in two, in a year and a half, which are three of the commissioners, or we have two other commissioners, including the mayor, um, that would not qualify, or do we wait and make it all happen at the same time? And in all fairness, and remembering a comment from our previous mayor, that it is really fair that it all happened at the same time. So if it's possible to, um, raise the, the salaries for commissioners, and a lot of people just really don't realize that just because we sit in here twice a month for a couple hours, doesn't mean that there's an awful lot of time that's spent behind these meetings with commissioners that have their special interests or questions, or, you know, the public getting a hold of people. There's an awful lot of time spent. And, um, because we can go up as far as what the county pays, which is about 1,500 a month, is that mayor, something like that?
I think so.
Um, we don't need to go up that much. But I'm just thinking that, that for the next set of commissioners coming in, um, to recognize that, we know what, what they're going to be going through, and we would like to, to do something like that, whether we have to set an amount right now or not. I don't know if that's the critical part, but just knowing that if we do it now, it's done prior to anybody even putting their name out for, to run or anything like that. So, um, I think the timing for right now is more critical than it would be if we were just getting ready for a new election. That's my comments. Any thoughts?
Thank you. Any comments, questions, concerns? Commissioners?
Just a minute, Mayor Protem, if I may. I like the idea of progressing forward with that. Um, I also want to throw one more thing out for thought, and that is perhaps allowing the mayor to get a little bit of an increase even above the commissioners. And that money would be used to entertain guests, dignitaries, or be used in the utterance of the city's business above and beyond what the mayor's duties normally would be. Uh, and I think I would like to see that position differentiated just a little bit in that regard.
Totally buy you to it. Yeah. Very good point. Thank you.
Any other questions, comments? Manager Madrid?
Well, Mayor Commissioners, I think it's important to, to note that the way that this is being done is in a way that all of your constituents should be glad for, because there is no self-interest for any commissioner here. It is all for subsequent, there is no guarantee of even running for reelection, being elected again. Uh, this is all in consideration of future elected officials. And, uh, given my personal experience in politics, that's the way it should be. And I, and I compliment you, and I think you're going about exactly the right way.
Thank you.
So Mayor, would it be, um, uh, benefit right now to establish a figure?
Um, I think what we could do is, what I would like to see done is that we go ahead and approve this, if we can, and then later on, maybe at budget time, come back with a, a figure and an amount. Or should we, Manager Madrid, you answer that question for us?
Well, what, what I would like is, um, either an amount or, uh, a couple of options that we could bring back and at least, uh, draft the ordinance to get that process started, have the discussion, and make the final decision when we do present the ordinance on the actual amount itself. And, and that way, we could display, you know, what the budget impact is. I, I don't think it would be anything major, but, uh, I think there has been a figure mentioned at a previous meeting. Does anybody know what that is? And I could start with that, with that figure, um, with
The miniature in the back of the wall?
With a couple of other options, including an option for, uh, a different options for the mayor, and, uh, and bring those back for discussion with a draft of a, of an ordinance, the draft of a document, and get the process started, get the discussion started, and at that point, at the, when we do bring that to a meeting, then we can make those amounts final.
I'm, I'm just going to say, I think obviously we're all the same path that we have this with an ordinance, of course. Now, one thing that's common, was made, that comes in a moment ago, I'm not really so sure about, is we're talking about giving the mayor extra compensation. Um, we're not a mayor, city council, local government, or state commission, local government. I'm not sure that you can have one, the commissioner getting more money. I know there's like a couple of duties and statutes provides for ceremonial duties for the mayor, but I don't know if it's permissible to have the mayor gain more money or not. I'd have to take, take a look at that.
Attorney Rubin, if I understand correctly, the mayor does get an extra $50 a month more?
What is, okay, say that again, it's $50 a month now?
Extra, yeah. More. And it's for that purpose?
Exactly, okay. Well, I know there's a statute that talks about that, you know, the mayor is a ceremonial head, it's a mayor, um, all of these functions. I didn't see any in the recording. Sorry, I guess it wouldn't make sense if you weren't performing these extra duties, that would be something that would be, um, that would be
Well, we could, we could look into that, could we not, Attorney? And maybe what we could look at is starting out with a thousand, because that's what we threw out there, and maybe 12 or 1,250 for a mayor, and that's just something to start with if we can work it. And knowing, Manager Madrid, that this isn't going to hit the budget for three years.
Right.
Right.
Right, and that's, and that's the key.
Right, right.
Let me, one more comment, please. Um, so when I was addressing the additional compensation for the mayor, uh, I think the mayor should be paid the same as the rest of us. The additional compensation would be for the entertainment of, and earmark for special events, dignitaries, things of that nature. And perhaps it could be, uh, it could be earmarked in a, in a different way. And if it's not used, it stays in the fund, and if it is used, that's what it's for.
And Attorney?
Well, I think there's a, I know there's a precedent for that, so I'm not sure whether, if I look for governments, we'll find that out. But, uh, the governor of the state of New Mexico has the same, a similar type of allowance or stipend. And, and that is a discretionary, uh, purpose type of, of income, and I think that's the avenue that we need to look at. But there is a precedent for it.
I, I would agree with that. I think we, a little bit phrased it in an appropriate way, and I think we probably could proceed in that direction.
So can we just start going forward with this thing? I, I think that would be a great idea to start moving forward with this. Go ahead and put this back to staff, let them, um, process the ordinance and put in a fee, and then bring it back for discussion and, and review by everyone.
Okay.
Manager, you're good with that?
Yes. We'll proceed.
You're good? Okay. So do we need to make a motion on that one? To go to, um, give staff?
I think I've got direction.
Okay.
We don't need to make a motion to give you direction?
No, just give him direction. Okay. Thank you. The next item on our agenda this morning is item I, Under New Business, I1. You're still waiting? Discussion Action, Selection of Streets for the 2019 Local Government Road Fund, LGRF. Participation, Benny Fuentes, Streets Department Supervisor.
Morning, Commissioner.
Good morning.
Mayor. Say, Manager. We got you a list of streets that you may see and pick and choose.
It's going to be golf club drive. This street would have Kerbin Gutter along one side. Um, put in base course in Hot Mix. It's about 230 feet long, 30 foot wide. Cost estimate about $19,000. And then on Beater and Royal, well, that one's already completed. That was on this last year. Beater and High Two Royal, that's approved for this year, that, that, that street will get done this year. It was funded already. And then City Street, Get into Myrtle. This area would consist of Kerbin Gutter and sidewalk on one side of the road in Hot Mix. It's about 240 feet long, 23 foot wide. Cost estimate about $19,500. There's not a bunch of houses on the street, but the owners always want to, want to have it paid to. City Street, Myrtle and Hanson. This area would consist of Kerbin Gutter, sidewalk on one side of the road in Hot Mix. Area is 316 foot long and 23 foot wide. Cost estimate is about $35,620. This street would be included with four and six, depending on, of course, on the funding we get, because funding's different here. Then we got, uh, City Street, Hanson, and the radio. And all these are pretty much in the same area out towards the Williamsburg side. This area would consist of the same Kerbin Gutter sidewalk on one side of the road in Hot Mix. 322 foot long by 23 foot wide. Cost estimate is about $36,000. This street would be included with four and five for a total of $91,120. Marshall Platinum, the tin. This would be a little bit different. We'd go in there and type blade, because there's, uh, patches of asphalt on it already. So we type blade it and chip seal it. This is the road that goes around the river road, around the back over there, the dirt road. It's 205 foot long, 36 foot wide, about $10,000. Uh, and this would start the groundwork so we could continue doing the river road along the back over there. Marshall, Tin Coal, and now you got pictures.
You have them in there packed accordingly.
This area would consist of a type blade and chip seal. Area is 350 foot long, 36 foot wide. Cost estimate 13,5. This would, this, this would again start, start my groundwork for the road along the river with number seven there. River Road, Tin to bottom of the hill. This would consist of new base course and chip seal, which we'd be doing a sandwich seal like we done on Beater this last year. Be two, two layers of chip seal on it. That's 1,800 foot long, 34 That's eighteen hundred foot long, thirty-four, thirty-six foot wide, about fifty-three thousand four hundred. And this would, this, this street would go with the groundwork for River Road and go along the, the seven and eight for about seventy-six thousand eight hundred dollars. West Riverside, Wyoming, and Daniels. This area would consist of a new base and chip seal. Area is five hundred and forty-five foot long and twenty-two foot wide. Cost estimate about thirteen five hundred. This street would start the River Road from the north end over there, would help with dust and motor, uh, dust control. Uh, Kruger, eighth to seventh. This area would consist of curb and gutter, sidewalk and hot mix. This area is three hundred and sixty foot long, thirty-four foot wide. Cost estimate about thirty-six thousand. Again, this would help with dust control and heavy traffic, and complete Kruger. That's the one we've been working on, on that end of town. East Eighth, Coleman, the Tin, that's another, that's a block we're gonna do this year for the LGRF. And that's, once again, connecting all that stuff together.
Comes in, connects to Kruger, too.
Yeah. Yeah, we'll have one more little block on, after this one on that side. Locusts, sixth to seventh. Curb and gutter, sidewalk and hot mix. Three hundred and ten foot long and thirty-two foot wide. Cost estimate thirty-one thousand one hundred dollars. Locusts, sixth to fifth. Curb and gutter, sidewalk and hot mix. This is three hundred and ten foot long and thirty-two foot wide. Cost estimate thirty-one thousand one hundred. And that would go along with fifteen to put it at about sixty-two, two hundred. Locusts, fifth to fourth. Curb and gutter, sidewalk and hot mix. Three hundred and sixty foot long, thirty-two foot wide. Cost estimate thirty-five seven. This one's over in the rodeo arena area. We could put it in there to get it done, with base course and chip seal. And now that we got those, uh, millings from the state, we went ahead and laid some down. So, basically, we just gotta go back and do a double pin chip seal on those. And we actually got three roads done in the rodeo arena area already, with those millings. And that's all I got.
Thank you, Mr. Fuentes. Do we have questions, comments, concerns? Do we select the roads that you wanna do? Manager Madrid?
If you're asking for a recommendation, I'll, uh, I'll give you a couple.
Okay.
I would recommend, uh, Kruger, which is option number eleven, and, and/or, depending on the funding, uh, River Road, or, uh, seven, eight, and nine. Where that connect Marshall and Tin and River Road. Uh, based on the level of funding and the benefits from either chip seal or asphalt. I think, um, it's, it's always better to do a, a permanent improvement if we can. I would bet that the level of LGRF, LGRF funding is gonna go up this year. That's one of the funds that's gonna benefit from the additional capital outlay. And, uh, the DOT, in, instead of capital outlay, is gonna be doing a lot more funding for street improvements administratively. This is one of the ways that we're gonna do it. So, those would be the two options that I recommend, and I listen to any others that Mr. Fuentes asked.
Those, that, those two would be good right there. I mean, other than trying to finish up over on seven and Kruger and eight and Kruger.
Questions?
Questions?
Mr. Fuentes, thank you first of all for being here, and thank you for the great job you did with the chip seal there by the rodeo arena, it looks really good. Manager Madrid, does that, did your estimate include, or your recommendation include a twenty thousand dollar, um, chip seal layer if we're gonna put on that road over there by the rodeo arena?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
I can talk to that side.
Yeah.
Thank you. Thank you.
My second question was, is there any opportunity for any additional chip seal, or was that a one-time offer?
Oh, you mean the millings?
Yes, the millings.
No, we can apply for those every year.
Okay.
So, yeah, every year, we can apply for them. We ended up getting a whole bunch this year. We got three thousand six hundred yards. Usually, the way the state puts it is a hundred, a hundred, a hundred thou, a hundred tons is what they give, and, and we've been using that every year, but with that little bit, you don't get a whole bunch done. This year, we were able to get a bunch done. And I don't know if it's because it's the fines, because before they used to give us actual millings, but now they process all that stuff and just let us have the fines. And I guess they had a overabundant sum, so we got a bunch on this, you know. But, yeah, every year we can apply for them.
My, my suggestion would be, we have that opportunity to reapply this year to get some additional millings, and maybe take some of, there are these secondary roads that we're not able to do with your recommendation.
Understood, Commissioner. It's a good idea.
Manager Madrid, I do have one question. Um, these two options that you recommended, they would also include the two items that are funded to be completed this year, right?
Oh, yes.
Okay.
Absolutely.
Perfect. Is there any further discussion, questions, comments, concerns? Commissioner Clark, you don't have anything?
(laughing).
All right, I stand...
I'm saving.
You're saving, okay. I will stand for a motion to approve the selection of streets for the two thousand nineteen local government road, LGRF participation, which would be option eleven, and then, um, seven, eight, and nine, correct?
Correct, Mayor.
And, yeah, that would be funding for nineteen twenty.
Nineteen and twenty, okay. Manager, major.
(laughing).
I would like to move that, uh, we go ahead with the manager Madrid's recommendation, and that over.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
I have a motion in a second that we, uh, approve the LGRF, um, selection of streets for two thousand nineteen twenty, as recommended by manager Madrid, which would be option eleven, and then seven, eight, and nine. Do we have any further discussion? Questions, comments, concerns? Hearing none? Um, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
Seconded that?
I did.
You didn't hear it, he's right there next to you, missy. Thank you, Benny. The next item on our agenda this morning is item, um, I two under new business, discussion action approval. Approval to proceed with final design and construction documents for great blocks on Main Street. Oak Street Project, Morris Madrid, City Manager.
Mayor Commissioners, um, this has gone through a process that I'll describe very briefly. The process mainly involved solicitation of public input and ideas. It started back in, uh, August, when, uh, Main Street received and approved commission support for the application itself and, uh, twenty thousand dollar funding. The application was submitted by Main Street back in August. The, uh, Main Street received notification of the award, uh, in middle of September. During, uh, November, there was internal meeting with city staff, Main Street, and the architects to discuss the scheduling, the potential funding sources, drainage concerns, traffic safety, uh, city projects that are adjacent to the area, and utility locations and conditions were also discussed there. In December, public meetings were publicized and held. There were, uh, over thirty community members that attended. The project information was presented to the public. A solicitation of ideas was gathered in the forms of discussion. Comment cards, questions, and, and suggestions were addressed. In January and February, comments were also received by, uh, email, phone calls, surveys, and publications. On January twenty-fifth, we had an internal meeting with city staff, architects, and Main Street to review the various design options. There were three options that were chosen to present to the public, uh, based on feasibility, cost, and impact on, uh, on the area. On, uh, February the fourth, the, I think the biggest public meeting, and, and one of the ones that I was able to attend, uh, the public meeting was held, and the presentation of options was given and discussed in detail. This meeting was actually a few hours long, and questions were asked and answered. I think from that meeting came a general consensus of the best option. Uh, the design for the best option, uh, we can put up on the screen now. The option that's recommended comes from the input that was generated through this entire process. It's not through any single person or group's preference. This is a result of the public comment and public input process itself.
She needs a pointer, St. Flynn.
Tracy.
On the top, this is the pointer.
I'm gonna ask Tracy to kind of give a general description of the impact on which side of the street.
And if it's okay, sir, we do have the, uh...
Yeah.
Architect here, and maybe he would be a better one to...
Oh, I don't see him.
I was hiding in the back. My name is Rob Loftus, I need to state my address, I'm in Edgewood. I work for MRW and Landscape Architects out at Albuquerque, New Mexico. Um, we've done several of these types of projects, Artesia Main Street, some of those you may have heard of. Um, what we're looking at is a two-way option, um, so it maintains the two-way traffic that's currently there now. Um, we're looking at widening the sidewalks, we're looking at narrowing the drivelanes, and creating a more organized parking. Now, narrowing the drivelanes does not mean that they are narrow, it just means they're kind of right-sized compared to what they are now. So, we looked at, uh, probably about twenty-five different options, um, and kind of judged those based on the quantity of parking, uh, the width of the roadway, width of the sidewalk, um, just drainage took in those to consideration. So, this option, the parking is concentrated on the west side of the street, because that's where you get the most parking. Um, the, there's so many driveways, um, alleys and things like that on the east side of the street, you just don't gain a lot of parking. Twenty-two foot drivelanes, that's two eleven-foot lanes, that's, um, you know, perfectly, uh, sufficient for, um, large vehicles, the tour buses, things like that. It's narrower than a twelve-foot lane, but that helps slow people down, pay attention, and it gives us the ability to widen the sidewalks, and the goal of which is to promote more, uh, walking between Broadway, the Lee Bell Johnson Center, and Main Street. So, it's kind of bridge that connection between Bridge and, uh, between Broadway and Main. Um, we would do a forty-five degree angle parking, that gets you twenty-one spaces. Um, currently, it's not really striped, but if you looked at what's out there, you're probably closer to like fourteen spaces, um, that are available with parallel parking on both sides of the street. So, you actually gain more parking by concentrating it on the west sides, both sides. You have nine-foot sidewalks, uh, on east side of the street, and then the areas that are kind of dark... See if my pointer's working here.
Yes, the top left.
The top left. Oh, there we go. These dark areas are where the parking won't fit because of the turn radii and things like that, and those are the areas there that we can do lighting, we can do, uh, drainage improvements by letting some of the water come into the native landscape area. We can do seating, we can do all these other things that people said they want in terms of, um, places to display artwork, places to have performances, just extra room to kind of put some, some life back into the street during celebrations and things like that. So, again, we maintain the two-way parking. We can probably do some slight, uh, improvements to the traffic safety concerns that we have at Broadway and Main. Um, there's a issue when you're turning, uh, left here northbound, of being able to see the oncoming traffic, and then down here, slightly off-screen, is, um, a concern with, when you're going northbound, you actually have to, um, kind of go into the flow of the one-way traffic. So, we don't, can't really solve those issues just because of the nature of the way things were built and the way designed, but we do think will have a positive impact by, um, changing the configure of the ra, the roads slightly to line those up a little better, not lined up, but lined up better, and, uh, help, uh, with improving some of the traffic safety sightlines. So, we're, uh, SHPO, we have reviewed this, the State Historic Preservation Office, because we are in a historic district. They've given us sort of their tentative approval on this layout. They, of course, want to review it as we move through, but they, they're satisfied with this layout. Um, the DOT has been exposed to this, they were at the public meeting in January, they've heard it, and we're actually meeting with them at one P M. today to try to pin them down on, on the improvements that would be in their right-of-way. If you have specific questions, I'm happy to talk as, as long as you want me to.
Thank you. Questions, comments, concerns? Manager Madrid?
No, I just, uh, this is the option that, uh, on behalf of the community that I'm recommending to you.
Mayor Protim Clark, I know you have a question.
Of course, you can just see that, yeah.
I can see that rolling.
I got a couple of questions for you. One, why did you pick eleven-foot drivelanes instead of twelve?
So, uh...
Even though I know that eleven is the, you know, it's standard, but I'm just curious.
Uh, so, really, um, it's a, it's a balancing act. When we look at a public right-of-way, this one's about sixty feet, we go, how do we use each one of those feet, right, across the right-of-way? So, we look at, if we do twelve-foot lanes, you lose two feet somewhere, um, so the, the sidewalks get narrower, um, or the parking gets, you know, the angle from forty-five goes to more of a twenty-two and a half, and overall, you lose some parking. So, it's kind of a careful analysis and balancing. Um, in a street like this, where we really do want to promote pedestrian activity, the narrower a, a lane, some places even go down to ten feet, which I wouldn't recommend, it slows people down, because when, uh, it's a perception thing, when, when the road gets narrower, even visually, it slows people down. When we have a four-lane road with the big white shoulders, you drive like you're on interstate, it's just human nature. So, trying to slow people down a little bit to pay attention, trying to gain more pedestrian activity, what we heard, um, loud and clear from the public is that, you know, they wanna promote more movement, uh, so if you park and go to Lee Bell Center, it's attractive and why to walk down to Broadway and eat lunch, or, or, you know, move through the corridor. So, it's really a balancing, and I think in, in the United States, we, especially like in the seventies, we let the vehicles have as much room as they possibly wanted, and the bare minimum for pedestrians, and then we wonder why people don't walk anywhere. So, it's kind of like a, a right-sizing, I would say, of balancing pedestrians, parking, um, traffic lanes. One of the other things we did, you can see, um... One of the other things we did, you can see that associated with the Lee Bell Center, we have real wide turning radii on the corners. That's because we know that there's large tour buses and RVs and things like that associated with there. So, where we don't have a turning movement like this way coming southbound, we do a real tight radius that gives us more room for handicap ramps and things like that. But where we know that the cars, larger vehicles are going, we have provided that for them. The layout has also been preliminary reviewed by a civil engineer who's looking at all those traffic issues.
Yeah, that was my next question, is taking, you know, big delivery trucks or buses and making those tight turns going on to Fos Street if they have to eleven feet, where there's a bigger radius for them right now. So, that was a concern.
So, yeah, so those have been provided for.
And then, when we're doing nine foot, we're still having to get ADA all the way up, right?
Yeah, so the bare minimum for ADA is four feet. Five feet is the recommendation from the DOT for ADA, and we'll be exceeding that. So, every corner will have federally compliant ADA access.
Well, my question then is to follow that through. When we did ADA down on Broadway and Main Street, we ended up with some curbs that are like a foot and a half tall. Have you looked at that? Are we going to end up having that problem on this section of Fos Street?
I don't... So, the surveyors were out last week getting all the spot elevations shot so that we can answer that question down to the tenth of an inch. So, we don't have that information, but standing out there, with my experience, I don't anticipate that. We're pretty flat. We're not in a situation where, in some historic districts, where the finish for the building varies from one building to another, or is really high compared to the street. Like, if you go to Silver City, you've got the eighteen-inch curbs because they were built up. So, we're in pretty good shape in terms of the relationship of buildings to the road, to the crown of the road. So, I anticipate we're going to be six- or eight-inch curbs that are standard. And then, on the hill part, where we do have a doorway of a building and the slope of the sidewalk is in conflict, the more room we have, like that nine feet, the more room we have to warp and make grades work without violating some of those ADA concerns.
And then, the last question I have, Mr. Laffas, is so if I'm driving north on Fos Street, and then I want to park on the other side of the street, I'm going to have to make that curve, and is there any kind of a traffic hazard if I'm doing that tight of a curve with an eleven-foot roadway to do that?
You know, it'll be tight, and there will have to be some movement there, but it's one of those trade-offs that to do parking on both sides of the street, the only configuration that will work because of the narrow right-of-way is parallel parking. So, if you look at parallel parking on the east side of the street, because of the amount of driveways, alleys, and things like that, I mean, you really get very few. I think maybe you have four spots, and then you actually lose parking on the west side. So, you gain net more parking by concentrating on one side of the street, with the west side being where you get the most. The other thing that we looked at is the type of businesses that are on the east side. They either have large off-street parking lots, like El Faro, or the insurance office, or they're like, they're apartments and things like that. So, they have off-street parking. You have very, less off-street parking on the west side, and then you have more businesses that need that parking with the Lee Bell Center, the Chamber of Commerce, the MJ Espresso. There's a big traffic associated with MJ Espresso, and people are kind of double parking when it's busy. So, the place you need the most parking, I would say, is on the west side. It gains you the most, and it's that balancing act. So, I don't know if that answers your question. Yes, they'll have to U-turn or make the block.
Yeah, I'm just saying that it's not really a U-turn kind of reality to me. I'm thinking that you might have to make a left-hand turn, and so the northbound traffic doesn't have the advantage that the southbound traffic's going to have.
So, we take all of that into consideration. We kind of put it in the blender, and we try to come up with a solution that checks as many boxes as possible, and with a sixty-foot right-of-way, it's a tall order.
Thank you for answering my questions.
Thank you, Mayor Protem Clark. Is there any further questions, comments, concerns, discussion? All right.
Well, please, just one. The, one of the big issues we've always had is the visibility, particularly heading north across Main Street there. And I think this would be an opportunity where we can include just like something like a traffic mirror up on the corner of Main. I mean, they're not, they're not very expensive, you know, a couple of hundred bucks, I think, when I checked on them. And having a traffic mirror mounted on one of the poles up there by the theater would give that additional visibility. We would include...
Chief, could you come to the point, uh, Mike, please?
Commissioner Zagetti and I have talked about this, and the city manager and many others, that intersection, I believe he talked about it, that intersection where you're heading north on Fos, and you're looking right, and the cars are coming at twenty-five miles an hour, that is suicide corner, I am telling you. If I asked this group here, how many have almost been hit there, I think most hands would go up, and every meeting I've been to, most hands go up. I've talked to the city manager just recently. I've talked to Harold Love of the DOT. They're not too aligned with the mirrors because they can get wet and get dirty, and, you know, it's not, it's good for a warehouse, they say. But we need to do something before, in fact, I submitted my email, I think I wrote a book about the problem with that car. I almost got hit three times in eight months. You've got one second, one second before a car's going to hit you when you think it's clear. I'm serious, and you probably know that. And Linda, who's sitting here, DeMarino, she says every day she hears brakes screeching, people pulling out, every day. So, we're looking at a solution until this happens, because that might be a year and a half, two years. So, the solution we have is really going to be safe. So, if you want to talk about it, I'll talk about it, Mr. Madrid. Do you want to wait? Just wait, because I think...
Well, we'll have that discussion separately from this item. We can stay on track.
Thank you.
And I'd just briefly add to that, that once the survey is in hand, we will know exactly the limitations we have to work within. And then, our meeting this afternoon with the DOT, we're going to press them on the specific issue of the site triangles and push them on how much improvement that we can make because we are operating in their jurisdiction. So, I do feel like there's an opportunity to make both intersections safer. But because the locations of buildings, because of the way the curves and the roads were built, it is almost impossible without locking down buildings or something, and no one, you know, strike that from the record, we're not going there. There's no way to absolutely fix those in a configuration with these two one-ways and a two-way street on Fos. So, we're going to push that as absolutely far as we can.
Thank you, Mr. Laffas. Any other questions, comments, concerns?
I wish you could get up on Main Street, but that's not your issue, that DOT, as far as I know, so...
Yeah, we're going to goof around there a little bit and...
Whatever you can kind of mess with, that would be great.
Yeah, we'll do it, sir.
Okay, I will stand for a motion to approve to proceed with the final design and construction of documents for great blocks on Main Street. I have a motion and a second to approve to proceed with the final design and construction documents for great blocks on Main Street and Fos Street project. Is there any further discussion, questions, comments, concerns?
Mr. Mayor, I have a question. Do you want to designate Option B or as presented or something, or a specific option for that motion?
I would go ahead and name it Option B, as presented.
Option B, as presented? Okay. Do we need to amend that motion to include Option B?
Yes, to amend that motion.
Okay, well, amend the motion to include Option B as recommended by Manager Madrid, correct?
Correct.
And the Main Street group. And we have a second by Commissioner Zagetti. Is there any further discussion, questions, comments, concerns? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you. The next item this morning on the agenda is Item I under New Business, I-III, Discussion Action, Approve. Approval to Submit an Application to the New Mexico Historical Preservation Department, Blair Wyman, Airport Manager. Good morning.
Good morning, Mayor, Mayor Protem, City Manager and Commissioners. My name is Blair Wyman. I am the Airport Manager. With the considerable help of Bill Slemm, I am seeking approval for an application to a grant from the Historic Preservation Division. This grant would be used to develop the application for nomination to the National Register of Historic Places for the flight service station buildings at the airport. The HPD grant is a sixty-fourty-inch grant, and the initial estimate for the application to the National Registry is about seven thousand dollars. This would go towards technical assistance with developing that nomination. There is a pretty good picture of the buildings with the Delta Observation Towers. There's about a half dozen buildings, including the main building there on the left, and also the Beacon Tower, which you can see on the right, which is operational at the moment. The FSS buildings were built in nineteen fifty-three, and we have an excellent example for us in the Grants Milan application and their process. They are nearly identical buildings. As a matter of fact, they used our floor plan to develop their application to the National Registry because they didn't have one. That's the biggest similarities. The biggest difference is that their main traffic was an east-west corridor, and our main traffic is a north-south corridor and the history of that corridor. And I believe that's all I have. Do you have any questions?
Thank you, Blair. Questions, comments, concerns? Manager Heschler.
Are there...
Not manager. Commissioner TV.
Do we have any designs to upgrade or change these buildings? As you know, that once they have a historical designation, everything changes as far as what we can do to upgrade these buildings or make any changes to these buildings, and it gets pretty expensive. What are the designs and what are the plans in the future for these buildings?
The plans are, the ultimate goal would be public access to a historic site, hopefully a museum, which the Grants Milan Building is also a museum. At the moment, the relay station for the runway lights is in the FSS building, and we have a process of building an electrical vault separate and taking those out of that building. That is the only operation in these buildings at the moment, is, and once that electrical vault is built and that's taken out of the building, then they're merely a historic site.
The roofs of these buildings are in good shape, the windows are in good shape, because once we have the historical designation, you can only put the same period construction back in, which is really expensive. So, that's an important consideration.
Yeah, we'll look into, from my observation, they're in pretty good shape. There is certainly some amending to the buildings, fixing of the buildings, but the windows are all in good shape, and of course, we'll do, we'll look into what needs to be done and what we can do before that designation comes. The due date for the application to HPD is March eighth, and we'll get an answer on March twenty-fifth. The due date for the National Registry nomination is in September.
Any further questions, comments, concerns?
Mayor...
Mayor, I just have a concern that, and I've dealt with the historic buildings in previous, in the previous opportunity that I had, and it gets really expensive once we start the ownership process for these buildings, in that you cannot make any renovations, any improvements, or anything else unless you first consult with the Historic Preservation Office, and then they're going to dictate how you do those things, and it gets really expensive real quick. I think we need to look at this really hard before we make this decision. And if we do go with it, then understand that our hands are going to be tied in the way that we are going to upgrade these buildings and the way we're going to take care of it.
Mayor, I have a similar concern that Commissioner Heschler has, only because I was part of the downtown historic district when we went through all that process and we did the state on the national. But we made it a district just because it would allow a certain building, if they chose to do so, to remodel themselves instead of being a specific. My question is, they look a little bit shabby to me, and I'm concerned about the need to upgrade them, and Commissioner Heschler's point is, I believe, absolutely right on target, that it would have to be exactly the same window, exactly the same kind of footing, exactly the same, everything that's in there, including the doorknobs. And so, I'm wondering if we want to take a look at what we could do prior to getting that designation without destroying our ability to get the designation? And I'm also curious, one, why we're not applying to the state also, because we did state and national downtown? And the other thing is, if we do get the national designation, it used to be for private businesses and owners, they could get like a fifty percent match on remodeling the buildings. Does that work also for municipally or publicly owned buildings? Do we know the answer to that? That's a lot of stuff right there, Blair.
Yeah, I can find out the answer to that last bit, and the state National Registry is rolled into the process. It has to be, it's required for the national, so.
So, you're going state first and then national?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. So, yeah, I would be very interested to, I mean, I think it's a great idea to go for it, but I think that Commissioner Heschler's brought up some really good points that would be worth doing a little more exploratory surgery.
Thank you, Mayor.
And the one other thing you said, I'm not familiar with this that much, but doesn't that also obligate the city, say, you will take care of that building? You don't have a choice, if I understand it correctly? So, if all of a sudden we find, you know, we've got tens of thousands of dollars that work that needs to be done, then that would obligate us to spend that money even if we didn't want to, right? Is that correct?
I'm not sure. I'm not exactly certain on that one. All I know is, you know, I'm dealing with, you know, a couple of buildings that are in that district for downtown, and I'm just a little concerned about it being, not knowing enough about the fact that it's a public building and what our obligation's going to be, and that's a good point, too, Commissioner.
You are obligated, and once it's designated, that's not going to further deteriorate.
Right.
And so, if there are any issues with the roofs or the windows or anything else, then we are obligated at that point in time to fix those things.
Then it might be better to do them now than after the fact, as long as we don't lose the ability to make the designation. It's really complicated. You know who knows an awful lot about it? It's Sherry Fletcher. She's the one that kind of pushed through the downtown one. You know her well enough?
Yeah.
Maybe make a phone call to her?
I know Sherry.
Yeah, she might be able to answer some of those questions.
Okay.
Manager Madrid, questions, comments, concerns?
Yes, a few, and the concerns are very valid. I think there's a couple of issues here. One that I don't have the answer to is, how far down this road can we go and still be able to pull back? If we submit the application and we determine that it may be something that is not in our best interest, can we withdraw the application? Can we stop the application? Or, once it's submitted, is it out of our hands forever? If that's the case, then it's something that we probably should not move forward with until we study it further. If it's something that we can pull back on or withdraw or put a hold on, so to speak, until the point that it gets approved by the National Registry, because that's really the tipping point, then we could proceed with the conditions that we do not get into a situation that we can't handle, that we're not ready for. And if that's the case, then there's going to be several steps involved that we would need to come... need to come back to the, to the Commission anyway. I think we have two choices. I think we either wait to obtain this designation until the next deadline, and that may be next year. Or if it's possible to submit the application that, prior to submitting, we get your approval, but prior to submitting, it's conditional upon our ability to retract it if it, if it looks like it's going to get too complicated. That would be my first recommendation. The next option would be to table and leave it alone until we can bring back that information.
I do remember, Manager Madrid, when we did the historical designation downtown, it took nearly three years from start to finish, because we had to do architectural drops and we had to, you know, do a lot of different things. So it's, it's not something that happens really quickly, or at least that's not my personal experience, but it may be different if we're just going directly with two buildings, so I don't know.
It's almost a year-long process and under perfect conditions anyway. I just, I'm, I'm not well-versed enough to say whether this, this first application is a, is a permanent commitment or not. I don't think it is, but I think we should verify that.
Manager Madrid, don't we have a person on staff that has a TB ninety-eight, Mr. Dave Johnson, and has he looked at this facility and maybe he could give us a recommendation?
I don't think that he has, but he could.
What about Bill Sledham?
No, we don't want to talk to you, Bill. You deserted this.
My name is Bill Sledham. The, back, and I work for the city. I did submit to the national, or to the state Historic Preservation Division, a preliminary questionnaire that you fill out. It's very simple, saying, we think we've got a historic project here. Their review, state-level review committee said, yeah, great buildings, you've got a historic site, so go ahead and proceed with applying for your, your state designation. Well, I dropped the ball right there, and nothing has happened since. So what Blair is asking for today is grant funding to continue this process, to do the assessment of the building, to see if it is still, or if that area still qualifies, or just what our assessment is on it, and to help pay for the submission of the form to, for the national nomination. So we don't have the money yet. We may get turned down for this grant application. It's only $50,000 for the entire state, and there are going to be a lot of communities applying for this money. So I would suggest that we continue to apply for the money. If, if we get money in the grant form to proceed with the nomination, we don't have to accept it if you feel that the project is not worthy of going forward with.
Is, Mr. Sledham, thank you for your comments. This grant money, is it a match or is it just a straight across grant that will be given to us for this?
Sixty forty, match. At $7,000, that's a responsibility of about $2,800.
One of the things, Mayor, that's concerned, and I, you know, maybe it's different, but I do know a couple of people in the audience, and we've had this conversation before, about applying for a grant and getting it and then not accepting it gives us kind of a bad name for the next year that we may want to apply. And so I'm a little hesitant to make the application if we haven't studied, you know, what these buildings are going to need. And I think it would be a good idea, Commissioner Heschler, to have, I believe it was TB ninety-eight he did get, have him go up and take a peek at those and just see how structurally intact they are. And a little bit of homework still. I'm not saying that we shouldn't do this, but I, I'm agreeing with, with some of the comments that I'm hearing also, apart from mine, that you may want to do a little research.
So it would probably be a good idea to take this back to the drawing board, get these questions that the Commissioner brought to your attention, get these questions addressed. And again, it's probably a process out there, but it's something better safe than sorry. And so I feel that we could, you know, probably do something good if we could get the right
Absolutely, no problem.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do we need a motion to just table it until it comes back? Just to table it? Postpone it?
I like table better, come on.
All right, the next item on the agenda this morning is item I four, discussion action, approval of tower structure, lease agreement with Gravity Pad Towers LLC, Tracy Burnett, Grant Projects Coordinator and zoning official.
Mayor, before we get started in this discussion, I, I know that there are some concerns with the agreement. I think we should proceed with the discussion, and I, I hope I don't embarrass you, Commissioner, but I want to thank you for, for communicating with me. I want to, I want to tell a real short story about northern New Mexico and the way the elected officials act up there versus here. In certain cities, it's cool to beat up the manager at every meeting. That's cool, because elected officials in a lot of areas think it makes them look good. And a lot of the times, they like to spring things on the manager at the meetings or the staff in a kind of a got-you way. Commissioner Clark didn't do that. I would, I was always thinking, that's a discussion you could have had privately before the meeting, identify the concerns and, and still present them in a, in a concerted way and in, in, in open government. And, and that's what I'm recommending here, but I wanted to thank you for that, Commissioner.
You're welcome.
Because I'm impressed with the roles that your elected officials have. I have met more people in the last month than I have probably the last five years of my life. I appreciate the community's involvement also. But before, I wanted to go on. What I wanted to say was, I don't think we have representation from the other party to this contract, and that in itself is enough to probably take it off the agenda. But rather than do that, I think we should proceed and identify all the concerns as, as if, as if we were going to proceed with it, but let's identify all the concerns here in open session. That was my point, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, Manager Madrid. All right, Ms. Tracy, you're on.
Mayor, Mayor Protem and Commissioners, so we brought to you the tower structure lease agreement with Gravity Pad, and I think you guys have had time to review it, and at this time, I'd like to open the discussion for your concerns and go forward from there.
If I could permit, I can use a background, though. If I could do that.
Attorney Rubin, go right ahead. Thank you.
And the original draft of the lease agreement actually had been in our package from a couple of months ago. Gravity Pad, the rest of you, they had proposed draft lease, you know, or the materials. We had a little discussion about that. And then the Commissioner then instructed myself and the City Manager to, to meet in court with Tracy also to discuss a revision to the draft agreement, negotiate with Gravity Pad, and also the Verizon. And that's what we did. I had a meeting with Mr. Madrid and Mr. Burnett, and identified, made up twenty different changes we wanted to make to the, to the lease, or at least. I communicated those concerns to Gravity Pad. And I'm pleased to tell you that those aspects they were willing to agree to might suggest changes, so we put those changes together, assured again to Mr. Burnett, Mr. Madrid, and that's why we're here today. I appreciate Mr. Madrid's comments regarding, you know, Commissioner Clark, this conversation, because I reached out to Commissioner Clark yesterday, because I think, I think you might be able to give me some helpful information, because I think you've been involved in this also. And there was one, there was one issue that I wanted to just maybe talk about, because it's, it's an important issue, but maybe that I may have the wrong philosophy here as what we were trying to accomplish. First, take a look if you would in paragraph four, the rental provision. And what it reads is, it's, it's, there's seven parts, A through G. The first provision in letter A is that we would receive a one-time $30,000 payment from the tenant by middle of July 1, 2018. And then in paragraph B, it talks about that there would be additional rental paid upon there being a new tenant added, and we specifically designate AT&amp;T to be the first carrier. Paragraph C is somewhere there we talked about Verizon being the second carrier. And then in D and E, it's contemplated that there would be additional carriers added, and then in paragraph E and F talk about, you know, additional charges that would be added. And then paragraph G was language I put in, the priority should work with and we can maximize cellular services and citizens through the consequences. So my philosophy was, I was, I was under the impression the Commission was in favor of us having additional carriers, size AT&amp;T and Verizon. And this one, I appreciate you, Mr. Clark, your email yesterday, because I needed a different impression. You were, you were under the impression of we only wanted two carriers. So that's maybe a good place to open this up, is to what Mr. Commission's contemplation here, where you're only talking about the two carriers, or we're trying to open this up for additional carriers. So that was my initial initial question.
Thank you, Attorney Rubin.
Would you allow me to make my comments?
Commissioner, Mayor Protem and Clark, please.
So in going through this, and I did speak to Attorney Rubin, and I did speak to the City Manager yesterday before this meeting, so I didn't want to surprise anybody with my comments, because what I remember is we initially had Verizon come and make a presentation to us, and the comment was, is we really also need AT&amp;T in our community. And that conversation, I remember having amongst us more than once. And so when Gravity Pad came in and said they can represent AT&amp;T, it was, oh, then we can get both, that would be great. And it was a compromise even with our fire department, because they really weren't wanting anything up there, because that's the emergency frequencies, and they're concerned about that. So what I remember the discussion, and correct me if I'm incorrect, but what I remember is that our top priority is the delivery of whatever airband we need for the police department, for SCERTA, for 911, for the fire department. That's number one on our list, absolutely number one. And that Verizon would be playing a secondary, and AT&amp;T would be secondary to those particular requirements. What concerned me when I read this is that they were saying for 15 years, we wouldn't be able to change anything. And in 15 years, I'm almost certain there's going to be new ways of delivering information, and we may need to change a tower, we may need to do something. And so whether I'm reading that clearly or not, that's the information that I got from reading this contract. I also got from, that they're saying they have the right to rent, to sublet, sublet to three other carriers, and I don't remember us saying that's a good idea. I remember us saying, we want Verizon and AT&amp;T. We didn't say, go ahead and, you know, give these people the permission to go for T-Mobile and Sprint and, you know, whatever it would be, that they would indeed, if they wanted to add one of these other carriers, it would be our approval, not their decision to make one way or the other. The other concern that came up for me in particular is that there was a prerequisite that we asked of Gravity Pad and Verizon first, was that there'd be a study on the noise floor. And in talking to our fire chief yesterday, that has not been done. And I do specifically remember that we directed to Gravity Pad that that was to be done and approved by our fire chief before anything went forward. Am I missing anything here?
No, I think you're right on target.
Am I missing something?
No, I think that's what.
So those were the, the main concerns that came out of this was, and the other one that bothered me is the very, very last one, and I spoke to the manager about this one also, is that, you know, if we're, if something happens and this outfit is denied access to their equipment, we get a $500 a day fine. And there is a possibility that there could be a fire up there, and the fire trucks would have to stop it, there could be any kind of an emergency, there could be something we can't even foresee, that the city, for safety reasons, would have to block off that access or block off that road up to Water Tank Hill or something like that. And I feel very uncomfortable with us not having that, that qualification in that particular paragraph. And Commissioner Zeggeti, and I did have a little discussion about some of this also, but, but those are some things that are just kind of sticking out to me, that this doesn't, this is not reflective of what the negotiation we made here in public with these people was. And so that's kind of my comments, long-winded, but thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Is there any other questions, comments, concerns?
I'd like to, to add to that. The one thing we did discuss and, okay, let me find it. Well, okay, this was on there, under section 14, under maintenance. It does say that the tenant shall maintain the structural integrity of the water tank and tower at all times. So this does put the responsibility for that structure now solely on the tenant, all right? And that's something that Commissioner Clark mentioned to me yesterday, that she was concerned that if, since the tower is already condemned as a water tower, if we had to do any further condemnation on it, if it became structurally unsafe, you know? But if there was a structural issue with it, it would be the tenant's responsibility to repair that, so therefore they would have access to the, to that structure in that particular circumstance. But the, so one issue I have, now let me see, where is it? Can't remember exactly where it was. Well, basically, when we were granting them the ability to install any communications equipment that they see fit for the next 15 years, okay? So we would have no say in what kind of communications equipment they put up there. If they want to upgrade the system, we cannot stop them. Now currently, we, 4G is the standard, but there's a lot of talk about upgrading to 5G, and there is a lot of controversy about that, because it gets into a frequency range, which really hasn't been cleared. There are, there are a lot of concerns about the microwave frequency range of the 5G network. And a lot of people are concerned that that's getting into a, a dangerous area, that may be dangerous to public safety. Now, this agreement would permit them to put that equipment up there, and we would have absolutely no say in it.
That's a good point.
That, that kind of. That kind of worries me a little bit because, you know, they're, the communication companies, they're in it for the money, you know? They want to do, they want to upgrade it as much as possible. And I, I'm a little bit concerned that, you know, in the future, they may push this into a region that the commission does not feel comfortable with. And I certainly don't feel comfortable with that, that kind of an upgrade at this point. And that, that's another point that worries me on this contract.
Thank you, Commissioner Zegati. Let me ask the chief, please.
Sure.
Chief Aragon, could you turn to the mic, please? Could you give us your comments, concerns, ideas on this and your feelings about this contract?
As Commissioner Clark mentioned, the fire chief's very important in this because he's the guru on the radio systems. And I kind of somewhat agree. They're like a, they're the wholesaler and they can put as many systems as they want on there. And it could interfere with the radio traffic. And the fire chief mentioned that last time and as Commissioner Zegati mentioned, 5G, that's the newest radio technology. Verizon's kind of the king on, I believe. So we need to look at that, make sure that it doesn't interfere or harm the public and so forth. But obviously, you're right, Commissioner Clark, public safety is going to come first. So we might, we might want to look at it a little bit in depth and do a little bit more groundwork and then move ahead, is my recommendation.
Thank you. Thank you, Chief. And we do have a letter here from the fire chief that says that the noise floor test on the water tank was completed yesterday, but it'll be a few days before they get the final report. So again, you know, that is something that we are out there waiting for and we don't want to interfere with our safety at all, whether it be EMS, you know, or law enforcement or anything like that. So I think it's best just to kind of table this, postpone this, look at it again and, you know, because we did not agree to a lot of the stuff that's in the agreement and we don't want to commit ourselves and then lose ground later on. Attorney Rubin?
Well, I agree. I actually, I like the way the state manager's approaching this, that even though the representatives for Gravity Pad are not here, we're having this discussion amongst ourselves, we know we're going to move forward. And I was actually just taking notes here of the different concerns you raised. Commissioner Clark, I think you're right. I have no problem with the access provision, paragraph 12, and certain sentence says something along the line that this provision is not applied for emergency use for the city. So I think we can probably include that. I don't think we have any issue from Gravity Pad about that. What's interesting about the 15-year provision with this is that I originally had proposed five-year terms and Gravity Pad, I believe they were okay with that. Then what happened was we wanted to make sure that Verizon was on board of all this. And Verizon's approved this, but they were the emphasis that we want to have a 15-year term. So that's what's, that's how this happened. So it's in there like that. They just said we can't, the lease is less than 15 years, so that's what you run into. So that's that. I think really the big question is, as I approached this earlier today, is what do we want about this rental provision? Are we saying that we only allow this to two carriers or do we want to keep it open? I, should I say, you had some comments about this earlier. I don't know if you heard.
I was under the impression, Mayor, Mayor Prokhem and Commissioners, when Gravity Pad did come and do their original presentation, they did show within their presentation that it was optional for other carriers besides Verizon and AT&amp;T and just limiting to that. So the idea that there might be other carriers, I was under the impression that that could be a possibility if Sprint or, gosh, I can't even remember some of the others, wanted to come in. As far as their full control, I think that was a little unknown at that time, whether or not they had to get our permission prior to allowing them. I think it was just an allowance. But I did want to thank you, Mayor Prokhem. Like Attorney Rubin said, we got the lease and we redlined and Jay went through and, you know, we got so focused on a lot of the bigger details that jumped out at us, it is nice to have another set of eyes, both Mayor Prokhem and Commissioner Zegati, to catch some of the smaller details that we missed. And we do appreciate that.
Thank you.
Well, I think there's a purpose for the commission. If the commission's telling me that, hey, we only want to have two carriers, we want to limit to that, I can revise it to reflect that. I have a different understanding, quite honestly.
Do you remember?
I mean, there's another person in here that was part of that discussion. I don't remember what Steve remembers, but.
I don't.
I remember.
I don't remember us having just two carriers. You think the option needs to be opened. And part of this is too, is we want to make money, you know? It's not just, just the service. And the opportunity to have additional carriers up here, I think we don't need to discount that. We need to keep that as open as we can.
What about the part that says, we can't change anything up there for 15 years?
Yeah.
What if we have to change a tower? What if they put in 5G like Commissioner Zegati gets and it interrupts with all of the emergency service? And we can't move that. We can't touch it. There's a couple of things in there that I think we need to really renegotiate, Manager.
And I agree that we should propose language that entirely protects our public safety and emergency management, no matter what, not negotiable, absolutely.
Thank you. That's number one priority I remember all of us having.
Right.
Yes. Now, the basic framework of this agreement is, what it does is it gives Gravity Pad standing as a landlord of that, of that piece of the facility and allows them to sublet, in a sense. Now, that's the other option to, to not allow that is to do an agreement with Gravity Pad, do an agreement with Verizon. But I think what we could do, instead of having to go through all of that every time, is to propose some language in here that still allows Gravity Pad to remain landlord. Their subletting may be subject to our approval. That gives us some comfort as to who lets, who gets in the door and who doesn't. And put in some plain language in regard to any other upgrades, for example, in the 5G, the, you know, the things that need to be vetted by the FCC are vetted by the FCC. And if they are, then we should probably not put ourselves in a position to where we say something is safe or unsafe or feasible or not feasible that would override some organization like the Federal Communications Committee. But still, gives us the final authority as to who will place on our, on our towers.
If this gives the commission any comfort, let's take a look at paragraph 16 for a moment. Your tenant will have the right to sign this agreement or sublease the premises and its rights to grant in the whole report upon the written consent of the landlord.
Okay. Well, that's even.
Are we now the landlord or are they the landlord?
We, according to the contract, we are the landlord.
Theoretically, yeah.
We're designated landlord, so I specifically put that in here so we would have that protection. So.
That's just assigning the agreement. It's not putting more equipment on the tower.
No, but well, but I think it addresses the question about having, who they, what else they would have up there and we would have to say so on that.
And our concern basically is that any other carriers that come in and attach to that antenna, that it does not affect our, our communication for law enforcement or...
Or any upgrade that we need.
Right, right. So we have to be very careful and we should be able to agree to who comes in and a contingent that it's not going to affect our public safety.
And again, I was trying to address that in paragraph 8A. Prior to concurrent, concurrent with the execution of this agreement, a landlord has provided or will provide a standard list of radio frequency users and the frequencies used on property as the effective date. Chetan Warren says, use of principle, not interfeor, doesn't sustain radio frequency uses on a property, et cetera.
And, and it goes on from there, or other radio frequency uses that the city determines is necessary. But I, I think that kind of, if you, if you stopped it at that, at the sentence there, that would give us the opportunity to increase our, you know, to use other, other bands, public safety bands. But then that, that last phrase, as long as the existing radio frequencies operate and continue within their respective frequencies, it's a little, that sentence comes out a little bit confusing because that one phrase that I mentioned, or other frequency uses that the city determines is necessary, seems to give us the ability to expand our frequency range. But the end of the sentence says, as long as it's within the ranges that we're already using. So it's, it's not, it's not clear. But I, and correct me with that if I'm wrong, but public safety, fire, police and such, is limited to a certain frequency range. Is that correct? You know, so even if we added, if we had to add other channels or something to it, we would still be within that public frequency range, that public safety range. So as long as we stayed.
We know 10 years from now, there might be some really great breakthrough.
Yeah. Well, then, if there was, then the FCC is the one that determines which frequency ranges and such are to be used by public safety. And FCC would also determine that other communications operations could not interfere with those public safety frequencies. Okay, I want to, just want to make a point. We're kind of in a difficult situation here. Right now, all of our public safety communications go out through that tower. And however, that is also the best and probably the, the only real satisfactory location for a cell phone tower that would serve our downtown area. Okay, so we're almost forced to coexist, to have them coexist. It's not like other towns where, yeah, you can put public safety over there and, you know, two miles down the road, you put your cell phone and they will be, you know, not close enough to interfere with each other. So we, they, we have to have them coexist. And I think it's important, as Commissioner Clark says, that we maintain our public safety communications has to be our number one obligation here. I just want to make, I'm sure we all want to make sure that this contract, you know, gives us that option. And I'm not sure if we can maybe just tweak the wording on that a little bit more. And I know there's, like I said, there's a concern there, but the FCC already regulates all of these communications and the cell phone companies and such are not allowed to operate in such a way where they interfere with public safety communications. So we may be, we may be covered on that side of it as well. I don't, I don't know for sure.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Mayor Wyatt, I'm not inclined to approve this at all until we get the approval from our fire chief, Paul Thule, who is also the emergency services administrator. Until we get a red light from him, I don't think we need to take care of this at this point in time. I don't want to.
Yes, I agree with Commissioner Zegati that there is no question that we need to have that cell phone range in this community. Well, I mean, we need that. And that's, there's no question about that one. Just making sure that we protect ourselves as protect our emergency people is the number one priority. And you're right, Commissioner Hessler, I think Fire Chief has not signed up on this and he doesn't have the equipment and he doesn't have this prerequisite information that he promised that he would have before we went forward. So I think we'd be doing our emergency people a real disservice.
So at this time, we will go ahead and place this agreement on hold.
To put it on hold, if you want to.
Or do you want to, I mean, you've heard all of the concerns.
My recommendation would be to amend the language that we can amend to address concerns that were brought about today, proceed with that in, in communicating with Gravity Pad. And then, when, when we're comfortable that we have addressed those concerns and the concerns in regard to the noise level study, when, and when Gravity Pad can be here to address any other concerns, then at that point, it'd be brought back to the commission for discussion and action. Without having met all those criteria, there's nothing to talk about. The only one other thing that I'd like to, to raise now is, are there any other issues that we need to hash out before we leave this item?
Any other questions?
Going once.
Well, I, you know, I said we're going to have them, Gravity Pad may contact at least on Friday. We'll list all the issues that we've raised here. I guess, again, it's still the rental issue that we talked about. I think from Commissioner Zegati's standpoint, paragraph 8A, if we deleted that last part of that sentence that you were talking about, we would feel more comfortable with that. Am I understanding correctly?
It's, that one sentence, it kind of seems to be saying two different things, you know? I think if you, okay, if you take that, take that one phrase, or other radio frequency uses that the city determines is necessary, if you take that and put that into another sentence at the end and say, you know, something that, that the, the city has the, has the right to add other frequencies within the public safety band if they are needed in the future. I mean, it gives us, it gives us that option that we can expand if we, if we, if we feel it is necessary.
All right. I took advantage of that. And as Commissioner Clark pointed out, in paragraph 12, we can just throw the other sentence in the recording and work to use to practice.
And like I said, I, I do want the, to have the representative from Gravity Pad here because that section 14B where, you know, it, this, I don't think needs to be changed, but it says the tenant shall maintain the structural integrity of the water tower. And I want to make sure, to hear it from them, that they understand what that means and that the commission and the tenant, you know, have a common understanding of what is meant by that.
Yeah, we talked about that. All right, so I also give the opinion here, I don't think really the concern to indicate there would be that hard to overcome. So I think really, I guess really the first preliminary question is having the fire chief give us his opinion on this. And then hopefully, once that happens, then I think we could probably work out the other questions.
Chief Aragon?
Yes. We might want to consider.
Could I get you to the mic, please?
We might want to consider, because the fire chief's so important in this equation in putting it in there, that a representative chosen by, you know, the commission would utilize a communications expert to determine whether it works, doesn't work or shows promise. Because I think we need to say that. It might be, you know.
Well, I would, what I would, thank you, Chief. What I would like to do is send this back to staff, to legal, to the fire chief and to the police chief to kind of communicate and figure out what is going to work and what is the best interest for the city. what is the best interest for the city and, and take care of our public safety and make sure that, you know, our public safety is first on the list and then everything else can come later. Would that work?
It's okay to me.
Manager Madrid?
Jan, I can coordinate a kind of a round table with those parties that you talked about, with a document in front of us and address all the concerns at once, absolutely.
Thank you.
Don't let Tracy out of that one.
Oh, well, Tracy's always part of the, she knows she's always part of the clique.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, the next item on our agenda this morning is, we're going to go back to-
Do we need to make a motion to postpone that one?
Do we need to?
Yes, we should.
Okay, okay. All right. Do I have a motion to postpone and send back to staff, legal?
Yes, you sure do.
Okay.
A second.
I have a motion in a second to postpone item number I four. Any other further discussions? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Ayes opposed, same sign, motion carries. Now, at this time, we are going to go back to presentations, which is E1, Presentation of the Business Impact in New Mexico by Jason Virgin Galactic. But before we get started, can, does anybody need a break? I know we're, you know, we're a little-
Mayor Wyandotte might suggest Mr. Lasic maybe just to second this out of this program and-
Perfect, perfect. Okay, we're going to take a five-minute break while Virgin Galactic sets up their program and then we will be back into session. I just don't want to forget, it's Atlantic, Virgin Galactic and his staff. Thank you and welcome, and I'm glad you made it safely.
Thank you, Mayor.
I'm going to now turn this over to Commissioner Heschler. He will give an introduction.
And just before I introduce Mr. Lasic, I'd like to recognize Chris Lopez, Memphis Space Authority, who is the Director of Operations or the Vice President of Side Operations. I don't know which one to ever call you, Mr. Lopez, so.
You may call me whatever you want, so I'll probably late for dinner.
Okay, sir. And I'd also like to recognize Lori McRavy. She works at Virgin Galactic and she's the organizer in chief. I don't know if that's your official title or not, but you keep us, but you keep us all straight, so thank you very much for that. And I'd like to really recognize Mr. Jason Lasic, who has over 20 years of airline customer service and operational leadership experience. Mr. Lasic is the Director of Infrastructure and Ground Services for Virgin Galactic at Spaceport America. In this role, he oversees the day-to-day activities, planning for commercial readiness in New Mexico. Jason joined the Virgin Galactic team via Virgin America, where he was a founding member since 2006. Jason has held a diverse range of roles and responsibilities, including overseeing the guest services process and performance, the Operations Command Center, and the design of government compliance training programs. His highlights include the development and oversight of the airline's award-winning Aircraft Appearance Program and, and member of Virgin America's FAA certification team. Jason and his family currently reside in Las Cruces. So thank you, Mr. Lasic, for being here with us today. I, I understand there was a delay and I understand why there was a delay, but I'm glad you persevered and are here now. So thank you, sir.
I have a comment.
Commissioner, Mayor Proton Park.
We canceled you two weeks ago, so it's okay for you to be late today.
I actually asked that to Lori this morning. Well, thank you very much and thank you for the wonderful introduction. And again, my apologies to everyone in the back here. I would first like to start off by saying I had, have heard other comments used for Chris back here, so late to dinner wasn't the first one that I've heard there. So before I start with the presentation, what I'd like to show is a quick video. And the video was made after our first flight to space on December 13th, when I say back in 2018, just a few months ago. But ideally, this will show some of the passion that's involved with Virgin Galactic and part of the reasons that we're so excited to move down here to Las Cruces and also to Sierra County and TRC. So if you wouldn't mind, Renee?
Today in our space, as our beautiful BFFs do, along with the hopes of success, we gave the first spaceship of regular passenger service to bring humans into space.
Three, two, one, start.
Spaceport United, welcome to space. Captain Jase, please review. That's a dream. Don't think that after this show, we'll be set off on a challenging and important adventure to exceptional people coming forward to join us, Jerry. People who are consistently by your side and loyal to your side, people who share your dreams and people who know that you're the best. As I watch you in the great quiet, so I can see that I deserve that guy's ears. I think you have your right down there, Mr. Onceman, I know.
Thank you, Renee. I appreciate that, if you want to put up the presentation. So thank you very much. One of the reasons that I like to show that video in the beginning is it really shows the passion for what we're endeavoring towards at Virgin Galactic. This isn't a program, this, this isn't a line on a spreadsheet or in a general ledger. This is a passion that our CEO, our president, our guru, our founder, Richard Branson, is very, very excited about and personally excited to make sure that happens. And one of the reasons I show that is to demonstrate that this is about the betterment for humankind and one of our aims with the Virgin Group. You can go to the next slide, please.
You have the-
Oh, I'm sorry, I got it right here.
You're welcome.
Why don't I just go? Perfect. There we go. And again, one of the aims, the aim for Virgin is to transform access to space for the benefit of life on them. And truly to do this for everyone. So a little bit about Virgin, the Virgin Galactic team is actually a part of three teams. So some of the history on this, the Spaceship Company, which is our sister company that is actually building the spaceship, that is in Mojave. We have another sister company, Virgin Orbit, who is based in Long Beach right now, California, but they are actually the small sat satellite launchers and they have the ability to go anywhere in the world to deliver these satellites for the customer. And then the third piece of that is the Virgin Galactic team. The Virgin Galactic team will be responsible for the commercial operation of the vehicles once they're certified into service by the FAA. So as, as we had talked about, some of the economic impact to New Mexico, I just want to stop here and go over some, some quick facts that we have. So currently, Virgin Galactic has over 40 teammates now permanently based in New Mexico. This was up from 26 about a year ago, and ironically, I made the 27th person when I moved down here just over a year and two weeks ago. So the exciting part is that almost half of the over 40 teammates we have are locally from the area, either here, Las Cruces, or on the borderland area. We currently have an expectation of at least 85 more employees moving down here and/or a combination of moving or local hires here that will fill that number, but ultimately getting to about the 125 number that we expect to have once we go into commercial operations. And as mentioned on here, we do lease office space and warehouse space in Las Cruces along with the Spaceport America lease that we do have. So a little bit about Virgin Galactic, as we are the anchor tenant and we do support Spaceport through their efforts to reach a full, sustainable, and the potential with many other tenants. And I'm sure, as, as we go through this, please, if you have questions, feel free to ask. And I do have Chris Lopez here, who will be able to speak on behalf of NMSA. But as we move forward with this, we are extremely supportive of Spaceport's efforts in getting more tenants out there and more opportunities to use Spaceport America. As we know, we have signed a 20-year lease and we have leased the Gateway to Space, as you see there, which is our terminal and hangars. We started paying our rent back in 2013, and as of 2018, when we talk about economic impact, we had 2.2 million that went to 68 local suppliers here in New Mexico. We do keep information for where we do all of our spend in New Mexico. However, we can't manually get down to where the cities are right now because some billing addresses is what it goes by. So they may be in littler cities or different cities. So we're trying to track as much as we can through that. But just some of the totals that we're looking at, in 2018, like I said, we had over 2.2 million to the suppliers. We had over three and a half million paid for rent at Spaceport, and that's up over 6 million for the year. That does not include our payroll, which is another 4 million. So add it all together for 2018, there's about a $10 million spend in the state. We're on track right now for 2019 to go to about 50% more of that. And exponentially every year, it's gotten a little bit more and a little bit more. Here's some of the information that, that we had on there as far as where the payments have gone to. And we do have contracts that will be coming up from the customer service side, where we will be pairing up with local customer hotels and food-related industries to ensure that there's support outside of Virgin, or outside at Spaceport America. So a little background, we have over 600 people signed up to fly to space. Those 600 people will be coming through TRC, they will be coming through Spaceport. All of our flights will start and will end in Las Cruces. I'm sorry, Las Cruces. My apologies, at Spaceport America. Currently, we are in the developmental stage and also the test stage for getting our spacecraft, as, as I'd mentioned before, certified to fly. Up until that time, we do have to fly from our Mojave Space Station because that's our certified test facility. Once we do get that ability, that checkbox that says you can go commercial, that is the second that we can start flying down here in New Mexico and at Spaceport America. Up until then, we're limited for what we can do because of the test program and what our agreements are with the FAA. So a quick update on Spaceship Two, our Unity, we did have, as mentioned here, a great start in 2016. We had a lot of positive movement through 2018, all culminating with a flight earlier last week, that we had our second flight, in which we put the first commercial astronaut into space. So Beth Moses, who is our leader of the astronaut community, actually flew as the first female commercial astronaut that went into space, along with the vehicle. And that, given our last flight, which was December 13th, we had two pilots onboard. This flight, we had two pilots and the first commercial person, which is five people we've put into space in the last two and a half months. It's really a significant number because actually, the only, the amount of people that have gone into space in the entire world are just over 500. So 1% of them have just been added to that. And when you look at 600 people being with Virgin Galactic, that's going to double the amount of people that have gone into space. So we talked about the Gateway to Space, especially our facility at Spaceport America. We're currently finalizing our fit out of the east side, and that would be the, there was a pointer on here and that, on the left side of the building, perfect, right over here, that's what we refer to as our future astronaut area. By a quick show of hands, has everyone in here been out to Spaceport America or visited it? Okay. So as you're familiar, in the center, we do have our hangar, and then on the west side of the building, we do have the back of the house, which is our, our teammates' area. That has all been finished. The last piece of this is the build-out right here, which is about a $10 million build-out that we're currently almost 75% done with. build-out that we're currently almost seventy-five percent done with. So, we're expecting in the next few months to have this part built out and which that will also include our training center for future astronauts, eating facilities out there for our teammates and also the Spaceport America teammates and basically are self-sufficiently set up to be out there and start our commercial program. So, with that, before I move on, Renee, would you be able to show the other video on there real quick? The second video I want to show you is actually the video that was taken last week Friday. We just got the raw footage back together and this is the first time actually this one has been shown. Our marketing team just sent it to me this morning. And this will show the... Oh, the second one, I'm sorry. This will actually show Friday's flight and also, again, the first, not only person commercially gone into space, but the first female that has gone into space commercially. Yep. There's no commentary on this, so it should be a little bit quicker. That's no problem. Until we get there, and again, this was raw footage from last week that was finally put together, but it is very exciting to see, again, that first person that has gone in. Again, this was last Friday in Mojave. That's Dave McKay, our Chief Pilot. As we all could see, he is Scottish and he is the first astronaut to ever be born in Scotland to go to space after that flight. Thank you very much, Renee. While it didn't have the commentary as it had from the first one and as Richard talked about his passion for this, what I wanted to show was the movement that we've had at Virgin Galactic and how quickly we've moved in the one year since I've been here. I realize that before I came here, there was history with the Virgin Galactic team and timing hasn't been on our side. But now, being here a year and seeing just where we have gotten in the short period of time to the fifth powered flight that we just took last week Friday, to the next steps when we're planning our next flight, up until the movement of all of our teammates coming down to New Mexico, it's really starting to come to fruition. And I realize that the speed of it hasn't been as expected, definitely, but I do see the movement right now. And the exciting part is we are having teammates down here every week getting ready for this. We are preparing both mentally and for our resources down here too for moving that operation because we're coming out of an environment that's in Mojave right now where it's a test phase. And there are obviously challenges that go along with test phases, but once that completes and we go into commercial operation, that's a whole change. Now, we're expected to repeat day after day, week after week, month after month. And my team and myself, one of the reasons I was brought on was to ensure that the New Mexico team is prepared, is prepared for commercial operation and is ready. And part of that is the outreach to the communities here to make sure that there's an understanding of what we're doing and how we can all work together to get to that point of everyone benefits from not only Virgin Galactic being here, but also for Spaceport America. And I look at Spaceport America, as Ralph had mentioned, I'm an airline guy through and through. I spent my entire life on the airline side and when I dispatched airplanes from Los Angeles to Miami, I couldn't figure out why, I just couldn't cut over the top of New Mexico and White Sands. And for the life of me, wasn't understanding why I have to fly all the way around it for years and years that always used to just fester at me during it. Fortunately, I'm here now and I can understand the importance of not only the White Sands Missile Base, but the importance of where Spaceport America is right now, not only for Virgin Galactic, but for future tenants. This is the spot to be with the coordination with air traffic control from Wismar through Spaceport America. The opportunities are endless, really endless for not only a Virgin Galactic, but also the vertical launch areas and other tenants that can come out there. Now, as I talked, this isn't about one spaceship coming down here. So, we have our USS Unity, which is the one that you saw here on both launches being used. At the same time, her sister ships are also being built in Mojave right now. So, we have sister ships Etta on the left and Arti on the right. And the names Etta and Arti come from Richard Branson's grandchildren. And in the beginning of the first video, that's who he was writing his letter to, was his grandchildren and leaving that legacy behind. So, as we're testing, we're not only testing for today, we're also building for the future. These aircraft will have six seats on them as opposed to the four seats that are currently on the USS Unity. Now, as we're looking at this and looking toward the future, we're also ensuring that we're engaging with our communities and inspiring that next generation. And through that, we're doing it locally, through outreach within the state. We do have a Virgin Unite Department that really reaches out globally, but since I've been here for the last year, I have seen the outreach from the Los Cruces team down here and from the entire New Mexico team. And we definitely have had great opportunities to get out there, but I also see more opportunities for us to partner up locally with the schools and also with the communities. These are just a few of the items that we've done here in New Mexico and some of the other departments that we've supported here. And above all, as we go through this, we definitely acknowledge that we had an accident in 2016 and the refocus is to ensure that safety is always first. I don't think that was ever compromised through the process, but sometimes the excitement of getting to space and sometimes the excitement of my boss throwing dates out there to get to, it is very exciting. We want to get to them, but through this process, we know it is a process to get there and ultimately is making sure that when this is done, it is set up to be ultimately the safe opportunity. So, I want to thank you very much for giving me an opportunity to do this presentation. I'd love to have feedback or open it up to any questions.
Thank you. Great presentation. Do we have any questions, comments, concerns, ideas, thoughts? Open it up, Manager Madrid.
Well, just one thing, other than welcome, I think the city would like to see two things.
Okay.
First of all, we want, and for me, I'd like to know how we can support you and how we can share in your success. If we could take steps toward accomplishing those two things, I think we'd both be a lot better off.
Thank you, and I definitely appreciate that. And I, as I moved down here a year ago and working with the local communities down here, especially meeting Mayor Green and Kim and all the folks that we've met here, I really see the passion for this from the community here. And I promise you that I will be here to support through that. I realize in the past, we may not have had as much of visibility as we provide right now, but my phone lines are always open. I will give you all my cards before I leave here. And my promise and commitment to all of you is that ultimately, this needs to work for everyone, absolutely. And through this process, I would definitely look to partner up, not only myself, but also with the NMSA team to ensure that everyone benefits from this. Thank you, City Mayor.
Thank you. Any other questions, comments?
Well, okay.
Mr. Zegati?
I'm debating asking.
It's okay, you could ask.
The one thing, and I think it's kind of would, and I'm saying this to help you.
Okay.
But the comment that I seem to get the most when the subject comes up is, you know, what are we getting, we in TRC getting out of it? And the people say, well, everything goes to Los Cruces, everything is in Los Cruces and we're not seeing anything here. I mean, I know you have worked with the schools and stuff, but the visibility of Virgin Galactic, the activities, what the actual impact in TRC is, is not apparent. And I hear a lot of that from the local residents. And, you know, and I think everybody is realistic. People come in here, you know, Los Cruces has a lot of attracts, especially for people with families, you know? This is not necessarily where they would want to move. But do you have any figures, like how many people are actually have decided to live in the TRC area or what other specific impacts are there to our town specifically?
Excellent. I'd like to have Lori answer that. She's actually been with us for a couple more years than I have and she can go a little bit deeper in that, please Lori.
Sure, I'm glad to ask that question because I'm from TRC. Went to high school here, my first child was born here. I'm very passionate about TRC. I want TRC to succeed as much as anybody else does. We have been actually part of the relocation team of the teammates that will be coming that we won't be hiring locally. And we have been giving them brochures. You don't understand how many young, single guys we have with four-wheelers and dirt bikes and boats and this is the ultimate place for them. They'd be much closer to work because they'll be working at the actual Spaceport every day. And actually, our pilots have already begun working with Realtors here in TRC because they love the idea of the TRC Airport right here. So, there is a lot coming for TRC if we can all just hang in a little bit. And we've also been using local restaurants and hotels quite often for our visitors that come through. I mean, we don't want to, you know, publicize that a lot because people want their privacy coming and going. So, we do have plans for a lot of our astronauts and their entourage to stay in TRC at Sierra Ground and other places around town. So, we do have a lot of plans for TRC coming up. And as Jason said, we were working with Mayor Green previously and we're really looking forward to working with all of you also so we can all stay on the same page and work together. And anything you, any information you need from us, you can contact us anytime. Thank you for having us here today.
Thank you.
Thank you. And what I'd like to say too is to piggyback off what Manager Madrid said, we would like truth or consequences Sierra County, you know, our different municipalities. We want to be involved, we want to be on top of the game and we want to know that we do exist also with Spaceport America.
Absolutely. And I'll defer, Chris, if you want to mention anything as far as the team-up or with from the NMSA point of view.
Thank you.
You guys read each other's minds, don't you?
Mayor Commissioners, thank you very much. And it's funny you say that, Commissioner Heschler, because the teamwork that Jason really helps lead has been phenomenal. When we say there's a partnership, people always talk about public-private partnerships and that attitude that Jason and his team sets the tone for a public-private partnership is remarkable. But in regards to some of the other specific examples to address your concerns, Commissioner Zegati, let me just go and real brief, real recent history, and I may be getting ahead of myself of a later briefing with you, but I wanted to address your question directly. Just in January, there was a production crew of over a hundred folks led by Crystal Jones, who we know runs quite a bit of Hollywood and photo shoots. Over a hundred people came from out of the area, stayed in Sierra County and know that's not our primary focus to run commercial photo shoots, but if you're willing to pay us and you're willing to add local economy, absolutely, we will welcome you in. And that commercial photo shoot actually was featured at the Super Bowl. As a result of that Super Bowl commercial that aired shortly after halftime, it was by Toyota. As a result of that, we are now getting additional inquiries from many other large names. So, to keep the answer shorter, we do have many examples of that. Additionally, we have permanent residents both on our NMSA staff directly, both with the NMSA team and several of our contractors also live directly here. And we know some of our teammates have actually moved from areas like Lincoln County into Sierra County to this specifically to work on the Spaceport project. So, I guess what I would ask everybody to keep in mind is all boats, all boats rise in a, all boats float in a rising tide and it is happening. There's economy going on here. We recently signed another customer in November and that customer has infrastructure plans to be building at Spaceport. They relocated to southern New Mexico and we actually have been referencing them to local area contractors so that they can get their fair share of the pie also. In regards to other customers, when we're talking to other customers of what is there to live, where do we live, where do we get supplies? Let's just go on the residency side. We are seeing about an eighty-twenty split when we were master-planning with our customers, with our other customers. I know Virgin will speak for their specific numbers because I have seen evidence of all those guys enjoying their four-wheelers. But some of the other customers that have come through, that includes some Fortune Hundred names, they are, they're having the impression from their teammates that they're looking out one year, two years, three years, five years of bringing more people into New Mexico. An eighty-twenty split, eighty percent will think they think will probably live closer to the Los Cruces area, whether that's Hatch or actually in Los Cruces, and the twenty percent will want to live in Sierra County. So, I hope I was able to address your questions directly, sir.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, I know, I know some of this information myself, but I, you know, want to make sure that it's brought out and discussed here because like I said, we hear a lot from people who don't see, who don't see at present that impact, but I can see it is, it is coming. Thank you.
Well, and I know Commissioner, County Manager Swingle has also noticed an uptick in the GRTs and I get phone calls from him periodically at the end of the month going, you had a big event, you had teams of engineers out there. And as an example of that, the Boeing team is now launching a mission at Spaceport America and they were supposed to launch earlier in the week, they were supposed to launch last week, they're now on the books to schedule to launch on Friday. I'll give you a guess for quite a bit of them are staying at, in Sierra County. Another example of a customer that's coming this week, just to be more time sensitive here, is Exo's Aerospace. week, just to be more time sensitive here, is Exo's Aerospace is launching on Saturday. And you can give, I won't give you, you get three chances, but I'm not going to give you the first two. Guess where their teams are staying at also. So, thank you, sir.
Thank you, Chris.
Thank you, Mayor.
Any other questions, comments, concerns? Again, thank you. Thank you for coming. Thank you for your great presentation and involve us, please.
Absolutely. And as I said before, I am committed to the TRC team here. When I first got here and Lori gave me some of the background and some of the, I think, some probably missed opportunities that we've had in the past, I definitely, definitely am committed to making sure that that doesn't happen going forward. Staying engaged here is one of my top priorities with the TRC team and Sierra County.
Thank you. And we're all open to visiting with you at any time. We're a phone call away.
Perfect. Thank you.
Okay, our next item on the agenda this morning is under new business, item I-5, discussion action, permission to use the water tank, the water towers located above the football stadium for display of student art at Hot Springs High School for the We Are Tigers art contest. Jim Shiley requested. And Mr. Shiley, if you can hold up for just a second, and we'll give these people a chance to get their equipment. And thank you. Thank you, thank you. Okay, go ahead.
Okay. Mayor, Mayor Potem, Commissioners, everybody, thanks for letting me address you. Was here last year when you graciously approved making October 20th Tiger Day in TRC. And now we're looking at using, again, going to talk about one of your water tanks, but hopefully it'll be something a little more aesthetically uplifting, we'll be doing with one. We are sponsoring an art contest, open to all the students in the schools in Sierra County. What we're hoping to do with your approval is to install the winning piece of art on one of the water tanks that's above the football stadium at the high school. I believe you've got pictures that they're showing the tanks as they now exist. And then one of the art teachers, our teacher Eric Fernandez at the high school made a mock-up of what it roughly might look like. We're proposing to use one of the tanks, the, right now, we're looking really at the shorter of the two tanks, just for ease of installation. And what we would like to do is, as you can see on the, there is around the top, probably quarter to one-third of the tank, paint it white and have our logo put there, We Are Tigers. The winning piece of art would be reproduced in very large scale and put beneath with, this year, we're hoping to have it all done before graduation with the class of 2019. And then each of the students in the class of 2019, we'd have a block of maybe 20 inches by five inches, and their name would be spenciled on there. What we're looking at right now is having all of the art on there, the logo, the wording, the names all be done in large decals like are used on boats, cars, so that it would be something that would hold up to weather, would be easy to install. And each successive year, we could go right around the tank. Hoping to dress up those tanks a little bit, make them look a little better. When you drive north on 25, you see at Blinn and Los Lunas, you see high school logos all the time on water tanks. But, and I know traditionally, since even since I was in school back in the middle ages, kids have tagged water tanks with their year or whatever. But we're hoping to have something just a little bit, little bit better to look at now than currently exists. So we'd just like your, your go-ahead to, we'll be working with City Manager Madrid to work out the actual details of how to install it, when that can be done, and those sorts of things. But we'd like your approval to be able to go ahead with it.
Thank you, Mr. Shiley. I'm now going to turn it over to Manager Madrid.
Mayor Commissioners, I think this is a very simple decision to make, and for the community and especially for the students, and recommending your approval that we proceed.
Thank you. I also just want to say that Manager Madrid and myself met with Mr. Shiley on Friday of last week and discussed this and kind of, you know, tape, you know, talked about it and whatnot. So I thought it would be great to bring it to the commission, bring it to all the attention of all the Commissioners, and get your input and ideas on it. So now I'm going to open this up to any questions, comments, concerns, ideas, thoughts?
I have a comment there. I can make it through it. I want to thank you. And I'm going to tell you why. The art department, when I grew up, was so incredible. And they would take some of us that they thought had something that they could work with. And they'd give us two classes a day, five days a week. And I actually ended up with a four-year full ride scholarship on a painting that I did of a Cemem mixer, of all things. So that being said, that's my background, a little bit of it. And it really disappoints me that so much of the art curriculum has been moving from the school systems. Because part of me also believes that art and physical education are extraordinarily important for the development of young people. And it gives them a different way to look at the world and think about the world, and it exercises a different part of the brain, as we know. And to have this come up, and then to know that another person in your school is putting a contest together for, for space art that we're going to put downtown is so refreshing to me, that you're defying the odds and that you're continuing to put this kind of thing together. And I can't think of anything better than to have those horrible things painted. And if your kids, if we have the kids' art up there, to me, that is just an absolute testament to the dedication of you people to not let the arts disappear. And I want to thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Potem Clark. Any other questions, comments?
Just that we want to make, I don't know of any problems with those tanks, but do we know that, you know, they are structurally sound and they're, you know, we won't have to come back in two years and all of a sudden, you know, we found an issue with the tank? And that, I just want to make sure that the palette we give them, you know, to do their art on, will still be standing after the art is done.
Yes, we will do an inspection prior to, make sure we don't have any issues with lead paint or anything like that. And it will be an adequate surface and structure. Thank you.
Attorney Rubin, do you have any questions or comments?
No, I don't.
Thank you.
Don't appreciate Lori.
Thank you. All right, this is a discussion action. Do I have a motion to grant permission for the use of the water tank, the water towers?
You sure do.
Commissioner Clark?
I'll second that.
And we have a second by Commissioner Baca. Any other further discussion, comments, questions? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
Thank you very much.
And I just suggest that you get and stay in touch with Manager Madrid and work out all the details.
Yeah, we're in touch.
And then he'll bring anything that needs to come to the commission.
Absolutely. Thanks so much.
Thank you. The next item on our agenda this morning is item six, under new business, discussion action, approval of a civilian volunteer program and related policy for police department. Randall Aragon, Police Chief.
Mayor Commissioners, City Manager Renee. This is a model that I've used, template I've used over the years. It has met international law enforcement accreditation standards, COLIGA, which is the big accreditation authority internationally. In fact, some of the assessors that came and did the assessment, they took this back with them for their own police departments. And these are three chiefs. The purpose of the program is to basically give us a force multiplier to help us out with civilians that are qualified to do certain tasks, and mainly administrative tasks. Early in my tenure, I called Mr. Fuentes and, because I had met Tony McRobert at Walmart, and he had indicated that he had a lot of experience with grants. He worked for the Council of Governments out of Elfinview. And I was kind of surprised he apparently saw it on the picture in the paper. So we started talking, and he told me how much he could help me. Now Tracy's, you know, been a godsend as far as grants, but he helped me, he could help me get to her and her to submit things. So anyway, Mr. Fuentes did approve Tony to be a volunteer. We didn't have a program yet. And I made him kind of like my special assistant for grants. And he immediately started helping out. We had a $6,000 ID card machine. No one knew how to operate it. And he started making, he figured it out with Tracy Johnson's help. And he started printing our ID cards. He's helped us with a Walmart grant, it was $1,250. And he's given me a lot of advice. So this is just one volunteer. This program would give us others to come. We could have people coming in and helping us with filing, helping me with, giving me ideas, making phone calls. And I've done this in the past. It also includes chaplains program, which Jay checked out. And it has been, it's a national thing, it's a state thing, and it's nothing that, you know, we're not, you know, you know, just flying, you know, free. It's worked. I've already had some ordained ministers that want to get involved to be chaplains. Obviously, we would use them for counseling because they're ordained and they have training in that. And I use chaplains. We had a chaplain years ago, I hear, over 10 years ago, we did have. But I'd like to use chaplains to help me get, give me advice on certain areas to help prevent and control crime. If I have a chaplain in the northeast part of the city, I would put that person to be like my point of contact, tell me what's going on there besides being the chaplain. So I'd use them with, to help prevent and control crime. The, as you read through it, you'll see there's a confidentiality agreement. There's an application form they have to fill out. It's pretty structured. And we would do local background checks, make sure that the person's not a fugitive, you know, doesn't have a criminal record. And then there's interviews, and in fact, Tony would be my volunteer coordinator. So with that, I would ask your approval to actually go ahead with this written directive. And this is just the start of many written directives that we're going to have in the department. But I want to get this off the, you know, hit the ground running with it. And with that, if you have any questions, fair to answer.
Thank you. Attorney Rubin, have you reviewed this?
Yes, I have. And a couple of points I'm recording. That was something I need to address because I have something, you know, be new to our community. And I find it is legally acceptable. I feel like the policy procedure specifically, the police chaplain would be in an unauthorized position, not receiving compensation. And most importantly, it's a voluntary program, you know? In other words, there's no authority the chaplain have over any of the officers. It's only the voluntary officers who go to chaplain, if he or she decides it doesn't, they went to. There's no government that chaplain has to guide by anybody. And I was also glad to hear the chief were talking about the volunteers basically being used in administrative capacity.
Correct.
And maybe you can explain really what you mean by that, if it's a little clearer.
Filing. I might have a project that I'm working on, or the deputy chief, or Lieutenant Baker, or whatever. And, you know, we have to make phone calls, ask advice, like call Las Cruces PD to ask them, you know, how they're using something. It does take time. And when they know this person's an authorized volunteer, they say that, I'm a special assistant to Lieutenant Baker, or the deputy chief, or the chief police. And I'd like to ask you the following questions about your program. And this is, this is giving me time to do other things. And I've had, and some, of some, Mr. Madrid, the other day, I did this in one city, we had a really bad problem with litter control. Well, I hired, we call, I made him a cap, I call him a captain, Captain Roy. He actually, we got a van, not a van, a 14-passenger bus donated. And he became the one that picked up with probationers every two weeks throughout the whole city. And he's still doing it to this day. It's been seven years, and he started out as volunteer. The city is immaculate now, because it was really dirty, a lot of litter. We don't have that issue. But there are volunteers that, like Tony, he stopped me at Walmart, wanted to be a volunteer. We didn't have a program. I got permission from Mr. Fuentes. There are a lot of people out there that want to help the police department and feel good to go home at night, and, you know, one fuzzy feeling in their brain that they did something, and they're not getting paid, but they know they helped us get there. So with that, I want to make it official.
And I think really in addition to that, as we pointed out, there would not be issued uniforms. They would, it's the bare clothing. And the fact that they're administrative, probably behind the front line, they actually back in the office, they must have worked, they wouldn't be out.
No, they don't, it's non-combatant, completely. Yeah, there's no, they don't wear a uniform. They're mainly administrators. And I know we have a lot of filing, we have a lot of checks that have to be done, and this would be people that do that. And they're screened. They're not just arbitrarily chosen. So this is a program used nationally. It's not anything I dreamed up, believe me.
Manager Madrid, questions, comments?
Oh, I've actually seen programs like this in operation. And where I came from, it was called, there was different pieces to it. I'll give you two of them. The chaplains program comes in really handy if you have an incident where you see in the news severe child abuse cases, and the officers that have to be in those situations, and may need some counseling or some advice, or just someone to talk to. In other areas, I've seen explorers programs, they've been called, where youth are involved with the police department as, maybe it's a career, maybe it's not, but it's something that they want to get involved in. And they give them simple assignments of standing at intersections during parades, just in case anybody needs something, taking coffee to the police officers when they're doing a DWI checkpoint. So that they understand what the police department does, and it's an opportunity for them to get involved without putting anybody at risk. So I completely concur with the chief's recommendation.
Thank you. Commissioners, questions, comments, concerns?
Well, yeah.
Commissioner Zegetti?
Let me just say a couple of things. Now, just for clarity, and this is completely different from a, what would be a reserve officer program. There's no comparison. I want to make sure nobody gets confused with that. And, yeah, I have worked with the police in, back in St. Louis, in St. Louis County. And, you know, they had other programs. Even the Neighborhood Watch can be considered a part of this. And I'm all in favor of it. And I just want to make sure that city commissioners are also allowed to participate in this. We, I've had discussions with the chief earlier on some things. And I would like the opportunity to help out also.
Sure.
In some ways.
I started a program, you were the only one to volunteer that time.
Well, that was. Yeah. I think in having people in the community involved in working with the police is a great way to reduce that anxiety that people see when, you know, they encounter the police. You know, you don't want people to consider the place as only ones there that are going to write you a ticket when you do something wrong, you know?
Yes, sir.
And this kind of involvement is good. And I know, well, I mean, just look at the response that we had gotten for volunteers with animal shelter, you know? You open the doors, and there will be people there.
Yes, correct. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Commissioner Zegetti.
Will you put Commissioner Zegetti in some robes instead of baseball hat?
Say it again, ma'am?
I was just reading through the instructions.
Yes. I agree with Commissioner Zegetti. When citizenry know that they're, we're accepting them and want their help, it just, it does, the partnership really comes together. And that's what we're trying to do. to do.
Thank you. Any further questions, comments? I will stand for a motion to approve the civilian volunteer program.
I shall move.
I have a motion to approve. Do I have a second? Commissioner Baca, second to the motion. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you. And thank you, chief. The next item on the agenda is I-7, under New Business Discussion Action, appointments of additional external boards and committees to replace Steve Green, Renee Canton City Clerk.
Is it okay if I go ahead and present the camera here?
Yes.
Make it a little quicker. Um, Mayor Commissioners, City Manager, um, as you know, previously, we had done a few other boards, and, and as meeting notices came through, I realized we forgot a few. So if you'll bear with me, there's, uh, three boards that the commission needs to consider appointment, and, um, the Southwest Area Workforce Development Board, and a section of that is B, the Region Four Chief Elected Officials Board. And in the past, um, former Mayor Green and Mayor Porton Clark have served on the Southwest Area Workforce Development Board, correct? And, um, I didn't get a chance to look when you turned up. Do you remember?
I haven't been out for a while, so I don't remember.
Okay. Um, and they are currently serving, and we need to fill the vacancy for former Mayor Green. And, um, section, um, for B, the Chief Elected Officials Board, like I said, is, is part of that Workforce Development Board, and the mayor generally serves on that, as you can tell, it's chief elected. So we're recommending Mayor Whitehead be officially appointed, and an alternate we need to be selected and approved, uh, being Chief Elected Officials Board, you know? In my head, maybe Mayor Porton, but that's completely up to you guys. So I'll start with those two if you want, and, um, I know City Manager Madrid has a couple of recommendations.
Manager Madrid?
Item seven B, I think is self-explanatory, that should be you, Mayor, with, and, and I think you would be allowed to name your own alternate, uh, when you did attend that board. And that problem, that, I'm familiar with that board, and I don't think it needs to be, the alternate can always be named by you, doesn't need, necessarily need to be voted upon right now. Uh, the South Central Regional Transit District, if that does not require an elected official, uh, I would like to recommend that Tracy Burnett serve on that board, because that is, uh, critical to both, uh, funding and transportation, and she could coordinate with our Road Department Supervisor Benny Fuentes for any possible funding or any other eligible projects that may come about for that. I think they're both, they complete well as a team, and Tracy as the primary would be a good representative of our city. Uh, I don't have any recommendations for the Southwest Area Workforce Development Board.
So, um, I'm gonna open it up for questions, comments. Um, I would like also that we vote on each one of these items, A, B, and C separately. So, um, I think in the past, when I served as mayor, I also served on the Southwest Area, uh, Workforce Development Board. Um, I'm just throwing that out there, but again, if one of you other commissioners is willing and wanting to serve, um, please raise your hand. Okay. So do we have, uh, an appointment for item seven A, Southwest Area Workforce Development Board?
Mayor, if you're willing to do it again, I would recommend that we put you back in there, because you already know how the system works.
Thank you.
And since she brought it up.
And do we need to appoint an alternate at the same time, or could that be someone that?
If you'd like to report it, but it is, um, I'm, I'm not absolutely positive with this one, that you can appoint an alternate or not, but.
Okay.
That's what you guys.
Well, we'll just go ahead and leave it as
Yep.
the appointment of the primary person, and if an alternate is needed, then we'll, um, request that information and appoint one. Okay, um, the first appointment to the Southwest Area Workforce Development Board has been Mayor, uh, Whitehead.
And I made that motion.
Commissioner Clark made that motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Commissioner Heschler seconded. All, is there any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. And then item, uh, B, the Region Four Chief Elected Officials Board, of course, that's self-explanatory, so that representative would be myself, but is there a motion to do such?
I made that motion also.
Commissioner Clark, Mayor Porton Clerk?
I'll second that.
Commissioner Zeggeti seconded. Uh, any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Uh, item seven C, South Central Regional Transit District, SCRDT, on recommendations by Manager Madrid, I would like a nomination for Tracy Burnett to be our primary person, if that can be done, um, contingent upon approval, you know, checking it out to see if that can actually be done, and Benny Fuentes to be the alternate. Do I have a motion for such?
Shall move.
Commissioner Zeggeti, I have a second.
Second.
Commissioner Heschler seconded that motion. Uh, any further discussion? Questions, comments?
Um, I have just a couple of questions. One, um, if it's okay, Mayor, this is directed to Tracy.
Sure.
Tracy, you don't necessarily need to come up, this is a yea or nay. My concern is, if I remember correctly, the last person who was on that board, which was Mayor Green, had to transport himself to Las Cruces for the regional meetings. And that being said, I'm just being a little bit protective of Ms. Burnett, because I know she's doing so much for us already. You know that, right?
Absolutely.
Um, and to have to take a half a day off, I might, like to do that, just to get away from the city and everything, but i-is that still the case, that those meetings are held down in Las Cruces? That's a yes or no question, basically, and are you willing to do that?
Yeah, I think there's a lot of opportunity to, to fight with other citizens that might be happening.
No, I understand that, but don't we need to transport you to Las Cruces? Isn't that where the meetings are held?
I understand that, correct, yes.
Okay, so just be aware that you're gonna lose this lady one half-day a month, I believe it's, monthly, the meetings. Okay.
Understood.
All right, well, you made the recommendation, and you're good with that.
Absolutely.
I just wanted to double-check that I, that I do remember it being in Cruces.
It's a trade-off, Commissioner, between, uh, do you sacrifice someone? Yes. Do you send a very strong team member? Yes, also.
No, I get that.
And Tracy is a strong team member to send.
No, I get that a lot, so thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Tracy. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you. Thank you all. Uh, the next item on the agenda is item I-8, Discussion Action, Approval of the Amended Guidelines as Recommended by the Lodger's Tax Advisory Board, Renee Canton City.
Thank you, Mayor, Commissioner, City Manager. Last but not least, we're close to, um, as you may recall, um, last year, the commission asked the Lodger's Tax Board to kinda go back, look at the guidelines. I think the phrase former Mayor Green used is that commission doesn't wanna act as King Solomon anymore when it comes to the Lodger's Tax funding, and if somebody's late submitting the application, or things like that. So, um, we took a few meetings, actually, to kind of look at the, the guidelines. Um, it took, it took a little while to familiarize themselves with it, and myself as well, because, um, it was new to all of us. Brand new board, they started very early, last February. So I'm gonna go through on page twenty-five to twenty-seven are, um, the list of the changes that they're recommending. So it's not really a, a big long list, but we tried to put them together there for you, and I'll go through them one by one. So the first, um, one of the first changes was that, um, and I did include that last change that you guys made, if you'll recall in August, um, they removed the stipulation in the cannot section that states the organization cannot request an increase in funds, and that was for the chamber, because they were interested in the fund fest and getting more funding, and the board was interested in possibly having more money to look at throughout the year, so that they might be able to help allocate somewhere if something came up. So they did keep that in mind with, um, with all of this as well. Perfect. Okay. Okay, so one of the first, um, changes that was made was basically the, um, adding the grant application information from the subrecipient grant, which kind of will help whoever's administering, administering both as well, if they're not so different. Um, and as we pulled it up for the Lodger's Tax Advisory Board, um, you can see, and I've included it along these pages, six and seven, basically, um, adds the grant application information. They put also in there for, um, additional funding, so that's the section here on, on page, um, six. So you could see, um, but basically, it says it usually starts in March or April, that's why we've got it now, so we can get busy and send out the call for, and I see that we have, um, Ms. Maryland's here, so we actually have one of the recipients here, um, and interested, and it, um, this is the way it has been already distributed, through the website and the newspapers, and applications are filled out, and, um, and so these, these are actually just mirrors of the recipient. So you can see some highlighted sections that the board thought would be beneficial to add in, um, one being applications and adding in for annual funding, uh, must be completed and submitted by the deadline. The deadline is final, and no other recourse is available. Um, but they thought, you know, somewhere in there, we need to add in other additional applications, may be considered on a case-by-case basis upon request. So for, if for some reason they missed a deadline for the full year's funding, beginning July one, on the, I think it's the end of April deadline that we set, then their first quarterly meeting, by then, they could submit another application for a specific event, or maybe some other events that may be happening, and should the Lodger's Tax Advisory Board have any money to work with, then they may make a recommendation for the commission to consider. So it kinda gives them another option, but it also, um, prevents them from coming to the commission and asking for forgiveness and getting the funding, when everybody else is following the rules. Let me, any questions on that one? All right, and then we have, um, we added in that the Lodger's Tax Advisory Board reviews applications and makes recommendations for the commission, and of course, just like it says, both the applicants are invited. But going on, we have, um, another addition on page eight, where the purpose of the tax is to bring, um, they thought it's pertinent to add overnight visitors, because that's kind of what we really would do that. And the rest of this is just, um, the way it was before. Okay. So on page, uh, thirteen, is that thirteen? So one of the additions is all funds must be spent, and invoices turned into the city manager's office no later than the last business day in May. And, um, invoices submitted after that date will not be paid, and will be the responsibility of the contractor. And they did, um, they added this in, um, through your consideration, and they thought, you know, it will be lenient in the beginning, because there's gonna be, um, a new process, and we wanna, you know, communicate to all of them very well. We'll send them emails, we'll send them letters. They're always all invited, and it's mandatory for them to come to the first meeting. So just so you know, you know, we thought this might be a good way to say, "Look, if you don't turn your invoices in by the end of the, um, um, year, at the end of May, which is actually the current deadline anyway, then, um, there's gonna be a recourse." So that one will not be paid if you approve these, or if you come up with something different. Then we go down to, um, so on the, uh, quarterly work report, the quarterly reports and spring reports, and actually, the Lodger's Tax Advisory Board now is requiring all their invoices and checks and, and flyers and everything that they're using, so they can actually look at it, because before, all they got were invoices, so they didn't really get to see, "What are you actually spending it on?" And they went, but they also, we, we have a problem with them not turning their reports in on time. So what they wanna add is file your reports and affect future grant funding requests, including reports of no activity, because it's no big deal, you don't write anything, you just sign and submit it, but it's better if we have, you know, a, a full set of all the documents. And, um, another thing that was brought up is it will help them, um, continue to be, um, on a schedule, and knowing they have to submit them. And to also add, the contractor shall be subject to losing fifty percent of a quarterly draw if the invoice is not submitted by the due date. That one went, you know, back and forth, so we'll, we'll look for your recommendation on what you think about that one, but, you know, we figured if, if we don't give them some sort of a, this is how it is in the subrecipient as well, don't give them some sort of a, you know, punishment or something, because we might run into the same thing. And one of the things that I brought to the city manager's attention is we have, um, similar to the way we did the Cemetery Association, who takes care of our cemetery, you know, the, the city may want to consider kind of doing that with the Veterans Memorial Museum, that's our property too, so we have brought that in. And then at the bottom, um, at the end, um, we just kinda changed contact info. Um, my original here has Christmas Avada as the contact, so, um, and has a strudger, I guess they, they give you a long copy, but Terry Gardner's in the city manager's office now, and, um, we also wanted to make it a little more detailed on, on what each department is responsible for. So, um, they submit copies of the quarterly reports to City Hall, um, the, the applicants, or the people we find, um, any other duties that are requested by the Lodger's Tax Board. And then, I'm gonna continue, because I've learned so much, and I think continuity will be good, um, but Lisa Gallowen, our assistant clerk, will be the secretary, and, um, the clerk's office is responsible for the quarterly and branch balance reports to the Lodger's Tax Advisory Board. We administer the Lodger's Tax Advisory Board, and, um, does that all open it up for any questions you guys have?
Thank you, Renee. Come on. Manager Madrid?
I think all of the amendments are very straightforward, simple, and, uh, just provide clarification in regard to the one that provides for a fifty percent penalty, um, that, the language in there is, is, uh, appropriate, that it is subject to. That, the language in there is appropriate, that it is subject to a penalty and does not automatically hurt anyone if they're late. I think Renee's correct, we're going to have a kind of a grace period and it'll be discretionary with, you know, if someone had a death in the family and had to be a couple of days late with their report, we would absolutely understand that. If they're a repeat offender by the second or third time, then we would impose that penalty. So it is kind of discretionary, but that's appropriate. So with those two points, I would also concur with the board and recommend your approval.
Thank you. Commissioners, questions, comments, concerns? Commissioner Clark?
You know, we've had, over the last several years, people violate and then not put in their reports on time. And they come in and beg, borrow, and it's so, it is very frustrating sometimes that there are repeat people and they have, you know, similar excuse and, you know, but I'm still, you know, the 50% penalty is determined by the city commission when they come in and beg, borrow, when they come in to explain all their problems to us, or is it a determination by the city manager?
I think the wording is, is because we process and approve the payments, it would be subject to the decision of the city manager. The board and the commission would then be a level of appeal. They'd like that decision.
Renee, I heard you say something I wasn't really clear on. People are just submitting an invoice now, right? And then the city pays the invoice directly to the vendor? So we set that up many, many years ago. Are they having to pay in advance now instead of bringing in a canceled check?
I believe that we reimburse them. And I, I think that we're reimbursing the person with the grant agreement, the organization. I don't know that we're paying vendors, Michael.
Originally, when I got involved in the Lodger's Tax Board, which was a long time ago, this is like late 90s, people had to, and Sandy, you might remember this, excuse me, Mary, you might remember, that the groups had to have the money and write the check to the newspaper, whatever, then bring in the canceled check with the copy of the advertisement and then go for reimbursement. And because that was so difficult for a lot of organizations, the city at the time made a change so that as long as the advertisement fit that criteria of being outside of town and focusing on heads-on beds, that this, as long as you supplied the invoice to the city, the city would write and pay that invoice directly to the vendor. And it took the pressure off of a lot of the organizations. I'm not, somebody told me just recently that they thought it had changed back. So I don't know what the gig is with that, but I'm curious.
I remember when they just did.
Yeah, but I don't know how it's handled now.
We're gonna have a form report and receive invoices. Would you like me to come forward? So it would be great if we could.
Marilyn.
Yeah, that'd be great.
Thank you.
And we haven't been as involved in that part because it goes through the city manager's office.
Right.
Marilyn Pope with the Toronto Springs Museum. What we do now is we pay the bill when we get something done. And then I put together a packet which has my invoice from the company and my copy of the ad or whatever I did, and a copy of the canceled check, and then get reimbursed. And I know, it's, somebody's told me that you've done it different ways, but this is the way it has been since I've been here this time.
That's what I thought had changed about two or three years ago, isn't it?
More than, it's changed, it's been this way for eight years that I know of.
Well, I know we started out, when I came on board, that we started out this way. But then there were some organizations that were having trouble with money. And so then we changed it according to Mayor Protem Clark. But I don't know, I can't definitely tell you how it's happening or what's going on. I just know it's taken care of.
I think when I worked at the museum before, they paid the invoice. I took the invoice into someone and they paid the invoice. But since I've been here this time, we've had this procedure. And there's four, there's four pieces of paper that I put in to turn in to get reimbursement with my reimbursement form.
So kind of where I'm going with that, because I was instrumental in getting it flipped. And I would like you, city manager, if you wouldn't mind, to rethink this one. Because, one, I think, because if you have to front the money, you're gonna get a lot of turnback money to the city for unused lodger's tax because they're not gonna have money in their coffers to be able to front that.
We borrowed money this year to do ours.
That's one of the problems, I thought.
We're nonprofit, and we're really nonprofit sometimes.
So there were, that's another example of one of the reasons why we flipped it, is to make it easier on the people that are volunteering and going out and putting on events that we benefit from. And they don't have to go out and borrow money while they're waiting for the city to reimburse them is a little bit of a problem for me. But it's just, you know, I'm just making a comment. The other thing is that in having to have the canceled check to be able to submit to the city by the end of May, then there was an issue that happened, Mayor, help me with this one if you can remember, it was either last year or the year before, maybe Commissioner Heschley, you might remember that, there was a June event. And because it was a June event, there was no way it could get in for reimbursement. One, because it missed the deadline date, and two, it couldn't get in by the end of June, so we couldn't have it in the budget for the year that it belonged. And so those were a couple of the things that were problems before. And if you're telling me that you have to go out and borrow money, that I had to borrow.
On the things that we advertise locally, like an ad is $200 or $300 or something like that, we do fine with those. But then when we're, we'll be doing it advertising in the Sephora guidebook in another two or three weeks, if we spend $700 or $800, that sometimes hits us kind of hard depending on what season it is. And we, and we need to advertise out of town. I mean, that's, it's kind of a chicken and egg.
Right. I think it would be a great idea, since we're talking that this has both happened, and I know it's happened within my term and your term, if possibly the clerk, Renee, could go back and see in the minutes when that was changed and how that was handled. And if you can or can't find it, bring it to our attention, but also have Manager Madrid look into, you know, possibly changing and updating and whatnot so that these businesses are not out on a limb and that we can make it easier for them to receive their funds if that can be done.
Listen, Mayor, Commissioners.
Thank you.
Hi, Kim. I'm Madam Mayor.
Thank you.
You called in yesterday or twice already.
Sorry. I can check into that. I do seem to recall it being brought up, but I can't remember the reasons that it wasn't gone back to paying the vendor instead. But I will, I can research that for you. One of the things is, if I could bring to your attention, if you look at the hotels that pay lodger's tax, and if we don't have it by the 25th, then we get a weekend day if it runs over a weekend, you pay $100 with fee and we don't hear from them. And we actually had a request recently that, when I was interim, that we did not. But we rarely, you know, maybe once a year have a hotel that's late. The whole point of this then being a little more strict is to hopefully get those people that we're giving this funding to to get there as well. And if we don't give them some sort of a penalty or a deadline or, you know, something.
And I'm just gonna interject on that one. And I appreciate the penalty because I'm one of the people who's paid over 25 years, I've paid a penalty twice on lodger's tax. And I just do it, you know, if I made a mistake, I made a mistake. But that's not what I'm talking about. Where I'm going with this is if we're going to be redoing the lodger's tax rules and regulations, can we reconsider what happened and why we changed it before so that our people don't have to, exactly how you worded it, Mayor? And the other thing that I would like to throw back to the lodger's tax board for reconsideration is what do you do with the unused lodger's tax money that rolls over? Because lodger's tax money is good for two years, not one. And that being said, a lot of people don't realize that there's rollover money that still belongs to their group, surprisingly enough. And that's the way the lodger's taxes statute is written in the state, from what I remember. And we actually, Mary Jo Fowles was still part of the outfit, brought the guide from Santa Fe down to give us the instructions on how lodger's tax actually works by the state statute so that we have that information. That's when we changed it, and I believe that was in 2006, Mayor, somewhere back in there. But I would like, I would like them to consider the rollover money, how that's handled, do we give it to the manager, let the manager make the decision on the rollover money? And then at the end of two years, there is indeed rollover money. And so those things have never really been addressed since I can remember.
That's kind of what they, when we first brought the first guidelines change to the commission, that's one of the things that the new board requested when they brought the funding allocation recommendations for this fiscal year.
But it's not, I don't read it here.
They, well, that was what they recommended when they gave you guys the recommendations for allocations for this fiscal year.
But I'd like to know about the rollover for next year. I'd like to know about unused monies. I'd like to see if there's a way that we can help our people be able to have access to the money. And they're gonna get it anyway, but I think it's really kind of crummy to ask everybody to pay in advance.
I do know there was a balance left as rollover money, and actually, part of that was used for the chamber for the film fest.
Right.
And actually, a lot of it, almost all of it, because I know the advisory board said, okay, now we don't really have anything to work with, but that's okay. Well, the Off-Highway Vehicle Alliance that requested funding, and they did determine that they really couldn't use it, had submitted a letter, so we do have, I want to say it's $1,500 that weren't allocated.
And I think there's some more turnback money that's coming in too, so I don't think it's been dealt with in a very efficient manner, you know?
No, yeah. But it doesn't say how much you have to spend each quarter for those.
But there's some turnback money because an event was scheduled this spring and it's being rescheduled for next fall. So that's, that's gonna be turnback money. I think you're aware of that, Managers, you're correct.
So if we could get you to look into it, kind of come to a conclusion of what was decided, when it was decided, how it was decided. Again, we're not questioning the penalties for non-reporting or not getting the reports in on time, we're just questioning, questioning about how to pay without the company or business having to forefront their money before they get money in return.
Right.
Beg, borrow, and steal.
I'd be happy to look at that, yeah, definitely. The only other comment that I heard about that one time was, I'm gonna say, it was a former mayor, was, you know, they were the only ones, a lot of them asked for funding from. And, you know, maybe it would encourage them to start asking others as well.
I just have one question. We're talking about the rollover. Now, if they have, if the organization has money that they haven't spent, that gets turned back to the city, is that correct? Or does it stay in their account?
It stays in the city's account. My understanding, Commissioner, though, is that by a state statute, and so we should double-check this because Kathy's memory's not as good as it used to be. But that, there's a two-year period once it's been allocated to an organization. And we're theoretically supposed to roll it over, even though the city keeps it, it's still obligated.
It's still obligated to that organization.
To that organization for the next year. Yeah, and that's where it gets really messy because that's a city accounting problem. And I'm not sure that we can change the state statute other than tighten it up somehow. But those, are you familiar with what I'm talking about?
Yes, and I think it depends on the type of allocation. If it's allocated for an event, then the event passes and the funds are unused, goes back into the general lodger's tax fund. If it's for recurring services or recurring commitment, let's say whether it's advertising, then that can be carried over to the same organization for the same purpose, as long as it's not event-related.
Okay. So in that case, that which rolls over and is still reserved for that organization, can that be shown, say, on the reimbursed, the request that they submit? Have another line on the bottom say, this is rolled over from last year?
Commissioner, I agree that that's probably the way that it should be. The state CDPG program has that, where they have $10 million a year from the federal government. They have $800,000 in projects that were not completed and not used. They say, this year we have $10 million from the federal government. We have $800,000 that had to be reverted because it was unused. Total available is $10,800,000. And that should be made through that.
So the rollover money would not qualify for that May 31st deadline to be submitted into the city?
No, probably not, no.
There's actually a resolution that's in place that only allows the city commission to allocate, let's say, $46,300. But I was also looking, I'd also liked opportunity to look at one of their contract agreements. There may be something in that about the rollover or something, because if that's something we need to do, we want to know about it.
Well, that's why I think it would be, you know, it's, we don't have to, but it would be a good thought to just throw some of these questions back to the lodger's tax board too, and have them, if we're gonna be redoing the rules and regs for lodger's tax, to have that clarity in there.
And meanwhile, whatever you guys can approve, we really need to start that application process so we're not backed up to that end of April deadline to start notifying, communicating to the applicants and get the process started.
Do we need to have this in place to be able to do that?
At least on this one, we hope that.
The first meeting?
Applicants' meeting, yes. Because if we go through the guidelines and what has changed, so they'll be well aware of it.
We're gonna go ahead and submit, solicit the applications as we normally would, and in the meantime, we'll be working on these issues. We won't hold up the application process.
Okay. How about you? So do we approve this contingent on or just?
Well, just go ahead and. I would shake those plans until the next meeting. We'll see if we can't find all your answers and we'll come there and let's.
Because I think it's gonna ask for clarity the applicants too, and if the applicant can make an application and not have to take it out alone, if we make that alteration for them, we might have more enthusiasm.
So then we're okay to bring this to the next, back to the next meeting? You have plenty of time to do that without.
Go ahead and another pair of applicants that will get started with the process and make sure we don't have to make any changes to the application.
Not entirely. What is the, what will the lodger's tax board role be in this discussion? Because they're not here right now and I, you know, I hate to tell them what their, what their position is. I think they should be allowed to, to, you know, with some guidance, because I think that some of them are new, they may need more assistance than, than advice.
It's true, you know, there's a lot of learning going on with all of us.
Yeah, I think it may be a good idea to at least inform them of the concerns that were raised today and support them and the changes, make sure that they concur on that.
Yeah, I agree that they, they need to understand. But I remember just going through this, you know, a couple, a dozen and a half years ago, and it was a really big deal and it made a big difference. Made a big difference.
Yeah, and I think we can administratively accommodate all your concerns while we're addressing them long-term. And if there are concerns, let's say there's an organization that cannot handle the cash flow of the reimbursement process. You know, I know that there are other chambers of commerce that will, for example, advance the first quarter and then chew up at the end of the last quarter. And things like that, you know, there are options for that for an organization that is in hardship.
And I know that we want to help them as much as possible because they do great things for us. But yeah, I definitely, I'll bring it up at the next meeting, but I'll definitely ask the commission to keep in mind the details it already takes to keep track of this, to keep everybody in line and all of that. So we add one more about paying vendors and making sure. So we add one more about paying vendors and making sure.
I understand that, but I think there's some state statutes that we need to reacquaint ourselves with.
So Manager Madrid, your recommendation on this item?
Well, it is to research the things that were raised by Commissioner Clark in regard to the carryover and the stipulation, whether it is tied to a particular agreement or not. That's primary. We need to relook at the procedures that we use now, because in reviewing the reimbursements, what I absolutely remember is seeing the invoice, the request for payment, the description of the items, and the invoices. I'm not clear that I remember seeing cancelled checks, which is okay. I think them creating an obligation to pay on their own, whether they paid or not, is good enough. But I haven't heard any concerns about hardship yet, but we'll reexamine those and see what options we have to accommodate that, and make those clear to the Lodger's Tax Board if they have any concerns in regard to that. Then we'll help them, or work with them to change the guidelines even more than we have here, and then bring it back to the commission, if that sounds reasonable.
I just have one final comment, I'll keep it real short. And I, just as something to keep in mind when we go through the Lodger's Tax process, and other things. The one thing that aggravated me the most when I was back in the Army is, our budget was always, you know, you're budgeted this much money, you use it or you don't get it next year. And so if for some reason, you know, we didn't have as many repairs or whatever, and we would come in under budget, all of a sudden, there would be a spending flurry at the last minute, and you'd get bad mitten sets and whatever, just to spend that money. And I don't want to see us penalizing the applicants for not spending the money that they had projected for that year by reducing their next year allocation. Just keep in mind that things vary from year to year, prices vary, and that, you know, and then don't force them to spend money unwisely, just to keep their, the amount of their application, to justify their application for the next year. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. So do I have a motion to send this back to staff? So I'd like a motion to send this back to staff to address the comments, and to review state statutes, and to bring this back to our next commission meeting.
I'll second that.
Okay. All those in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye, those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Finally, to the end.
Mayor, I'm sorry about that, but I want to just important to bring that such a.
That's perfect. That's a great idea and great thought. Thank you. Next item on our agenda is item J, reports. First report is City Manager.
Mayor, Commissioner, I'm going to try and keep this really, really brief, but it's something that I was asked to report on, and I wish the resident was here from. In regards to the golf course, I have a lot more confidence, maybe, than some other people in regard to the staff that we have out there. And I do know a little bit about golf courses. Just had an itemized list. We are making a lot of progress out at the golf course. We do have a lease ready to issue a purchase where we're on, to replace all those twenty golf carts out there with brand-new ones that are going to be even less expensive and less trouble to maintain. We're going to convert from batteries to gasoline. I've been meeting with representatives of BART and the Advisory Committee to review the rates at the golf course and update them while keeping them friendly. There's been a lot of confusion about the appropriate rates to charge because of the time that the contractor was running the golf course. We're going to clarify that. One of the other major components is the sulfur treatment pump out there. The pump has been acquired. We have hit a snag in finding a contractor that'll do high-voltage wiring close to a pond. I think we have that resolved. There's really only one vendor that'll do it. We have to get that done pretty soon, before the weather gets warm and the algae starts growing. In regard to the algae, we are also in the process of ordering the filter, to filter out the algae from the pumps, so that it doesn't get into the system and plug up the sprinklers. We have advertised for some more temporary help. We're going to bring one in immediately that we think will fit the need there at the golf course, and start them a little earlier than we usually do. They've also identified a company that'll come in and do the aerating for us, using a different method that uses water injection instead of just pulling out mud plugs. It's an innovative thing that I think will really help the greens out there. The squares to accept debit and credit cards have been working perfectly for now. I think it's four days in a row. We had some issues initially. Those have been cleared up, it looks like. We're making sure that administratively, we have everything in line to, that the cash goes into the right place. We need to address the facility itself, the roof, and some of the other concerns out there at the golf course. They've done a lot of painting, a lot of cleaning. With the limited resources that we've provided, I think we've put them in the right place. They're making a lot of progress, and, you know, I would encourage everybody to wait and see when the grass gets green, what we're doing. That's the real report, Clark. The other thing that I wanted to report on, you all know that we have lost our finance director. We're recruiting for that immediately. That's not going to be an easy position to fill. I've asked that we advertise and concentrate on two things. Someone familiar with local government, municipalities, and someone familiar with our Tyler accounting system. Those two combined means that whoever fills that spot would be a lot farther down the learning curve. Your acting finance director right now is me, so I'm dedicating more time to the finance area and doing all the reviews that the finance director would do in the areas of procurement and payment. So the staff there is, we're starting to fall into a routine for daily approvals and budget adjustments and things like that, line item transfers. The other thing is, I think we found somebody to hire as a director of water and wastewater, and combining those two departments, instead of having two directors, we'll have one. I'm also working on a finalizing of compensation plan by department, for the departments that have certification levels. The electrical department is the first one. They have certification levels that the co-op uses as, reading the co-op as a guide for that. So if you achieve a certain level of certification, you achieve a certain level of compensation. This also incorporates the fact that all of our evaluations are going to be done in the next few weeks. That assumes adequate performance and evaluation also. That'll be the model for some of the other departments, water and wastewater, will be the next one. For the other departments that do not have levels of certification, then we'll need to come up with something else for levels of proficiency. Either in finance and procurement, you can achieve a chief procurement officer status. I think you can be a certified human resource manager. Those types of levels of certification can be achieved if we find them. And we want to find them for every possible classification that we can, so that our levels of proficiency are not just self-declared, they're certified by an outside entity, and they're recognized. So that's where I am in that area. And in order to keep this part of it shorter, in the next month or so, I want to bring you an overall evaluation and assessment of all the different areas of the city. And something that we can either schedule a special meeting for, spend some time on, maybe even have a one-day retreat for setting goals and priorities, and to see my point of view, and see how that compares with your assessment of the city. You have a lot more history than I do. I have a current view, but that's the direction that I'm going. And that's in a very condensed version. The first half of my report today, the second five minutes will be from Chief Aragon in relation to a process that was started before I got him by the interim manager and the chief, and that's on initiatives that were identified to be taken and are either being undertaken or have been completed. Chief?
Thank you. I actually completed this in September. I tried to do it within the first thirty to sixty days. You know, we had a change in administration, and Renee had worked on it, and new manager, so Mr. Madrid and Renee followed up on it with me, and they're very thorough. And I'm going to just give very briefly what the assessment is. When you take over as a chief, the right way to do it is, you do it, you know, examine the bowels of the department, make sure it's doing what it should do, come up with what needs to happen, what's happening, and recommendations. And I finished that. Mr. Madrid reviewed my recommendations to move forward, and I'll kind of cover that real briefly. It's in four categories, personnel, law enforcement operations, animal shelter, and finally, administration logistics. And of course, I'm just going to cover the key things that I think you need to know. Training, I'm really into online training. People are getting masters and PhDs now online, so we really need to take advantage of that. There's a lot of courses that you do not have to attend. If we could package it, give it to the officers, they could watch it at two in the morning, when there's not any calls of service. So I've done a few items on that. In fact, the OHV ordinance, I sent that to Mr. Madrid. I did about six or seven-minute video, and gave them the, gave the officers the overview of that. And a couple of meetings, I did that also, so. And they had a sign that they, that they heard it and have no questions on it. The, I mentioned to Renee and Mr. Madrid about total quality management and principled center leadership, which basically tries to give the employees ways to enhance the overall performance capability. You know, I used to teach, I have taught the Seven Habits of Highly Effective People. And anyway, Mr. Madrid mentioned it might be something that we could do for the city. So I could do a brief video or something on that. Okay. As you probably know, for the current budget year, Mr. Fuentes and I talked, along with the prior finance director. And I gave up a position so we can get raises. I broke my heart, as any chief would say. But I gave up one position, so I went from fifteen authorized to fourteen authorized police officers. And I mentioned that, it was kind of, it was mentioned that in the new fiscal year, hopefully, things will get better, and I get it back. So Mr. Madrid, of course, he mentioned pending budget availability, he would go along with that, and that's reasonable. The role of risk management, you know, we have Jamie Swing, he's doing that. And just knowing what she should be doing, that she can't do due to the lack of time, and, you know, she works the desk, she's our frontline. When you walk in there, she's behind the window, and when she's not there, you know, Marty, my admin assistant's got to fill in. Really, that should be a full-time position. And I mentioned that she's also the emergency management coordinator, supposedly. But she doesn't have the time to do that or the training. It's not because she's inadequate, it's just that she hasn't had this training. And I did mention that to do the right things right, I suggest that risk management, which is really important, keeping people safe, keeping litigious costs down, it should be prob, it should be full-time. And generally, as it happens, it's usually under HR. I hate to lose the position or the person, but if she did go there with either a successor. So Mr. Madrid mentioned safety and risk management could possibly be moved to HR. PD would have to hire somebody. And then he mentioned about emergency management. I've been an emergency management coordinator for about an eighteen-thousand-population city, and that was my major job beside being chief. And I have all the training, and as much training as you get in that. And I was actually, we were in Hurricane Alley, so we were always planning for emergencies. So I'm not, not that I have a lot of time to do anything else, I wouldn't mind taking that, we talked over. We do not, I'll say it again, we do not have anybody doing that, period. The fire chief, we had a meeting with him, and Mr. Madrid, you know, we laid it out. He is the emergency management coordinator or officer for the county. When the stuff goes bad, for some natural or man-made disaster, there's got to be somebody in charge in our city. There is nobody in charge right now. I mean, the manager, he's very, very proficient, but somebody's got to help him get there. So the fire chief's not going to come here and sit in our emergency operations center. He's going to worry about the county, and I don't blame him. So we do need a person for emergency management to take charge and know what planning section is, the operations section, logistics, and the administration section, and actually have a general staff and a command staff. We don't have that. We don't have an emergency operations plan that's actually, it hasn't been delivered. So I'm willing to do that, but of course, we'll have to talk to you about how we get The two big things that we haven't performed that was my vision when I got hired, I talked to Commissioner Hess, who knows what I'm talking about. We need to work on police accreditation. We need to be an accredited police department in our city. New Mexico has an excellent program. We don't have to do the big international one, which is very, very expensive. And I've done that three times, but we could do the New Mexico one. I'd like to work on that. That's my vision for, starting this year. Someday, I want my police department, your police department, be a New Mexico law enforcement accredited police department, which means we've met two-hundred-and-nineteen standards, and we're doing the right things right. And you've got to keep doing it. Takes three years, up to three years. So I'd like to get there and do that. And make sure you do the right directives, have the proofs of compliance that you're doing it. And when people walk in here, we could say we're an accredited department, just like a hospital or school. Community-oriented policing, I'd like to start on that this year, where we move from being a traditionally-oriented police department, where my officers answer calls for service, get back in the car, and wait for the next call, go on that call, and get in the car. We need to prevent crimes from happening in the first place. That's our major objective, and making arrests as a last resort. It's not doing that right now. They're doing what a lot of cities do, it's just reactive policing. Community policing is coming up with solutions and having officers help prevent the crime from happening in the first place. So I'd like to start that, some accreditation, community policing, and Mr. Madrid has approved that. We talked about the IRT, Immediate Response Team. That was a vision, and we already did it. So we got an officer on that. A lot of these things, I had a vision, and we already achieved it since then. I'd like to eventually have a team of officers working on overtime. I call it a neighborhood safety team, you've heard it called a selective enforcement team, where maybe three officers, one being a sergeant, when there's a concern in a section of the community, those officers, uncommitted, not on duty like the others, you know, we have a shift working, but these three would actually go, you know, like a three- or four-hour mission, and solve the problem. They have officers working calls, they're uncommitted, and that would be on overtime. And we maybe do it once in a while. Or it might, could be a dog issue, it could be drugs, it could be loud music, but I know they're coming up with a solution, and I'm not bothering the rest of the shift. That's called a selective enforcement, or I'm going to call a neighborhood response Citizens Volunteer Program, we did it. So I already mentioned that. Animal Welfare, Animal Control, we've already been there and we've been, you know, judged as being in good shape. In fact, the size is adequate as long as we keep the exes going like we're doing and having our furry companions move out quickly, and it's working really good. Our goal is to have no more than 25 dogs and 10 cats, and we've been under that most of the time. So we have a goal. And we did this too. The facelift for the police department, I guess you've seen it on Facebook. Somebody took some pictures and was bragging about what's going on, and I got on there. Of course, I bragged about David and his crew because it looks so much better, doesn't it? The sign, the paint, and OJ's not even finished with the landscaping. And he stopped me the other day and asked me my advice, told him that Deputy Chief Hupadoff would get with him to outline the color of the rocks and so forth. So we're going to make it look good on the outside. So really, we have a good structure, it'll be there a while, and it looks a lot better than it did. With that, do I have any questions?
When are you going to have the other buildings painted downtown?
Other building? Which one's that?
Well, we've got City Hall, we've got the Adams.
Oh. Well, we really, you know, we have some structural issues on the outside. It was chipping and paint, so we were really protecting it, but it's really looking good. And I thank David and his craftsmen. And by the way, the color scheme and everything, that's been my staff, you know, voted on that, and they wanted that brown color and the like. Hopefully, there's any questions?
Just a comment.
Sir?
You don't always give accolades for doing the things that you're doing. But sometimes, the proof is that we don't hear the things that we used to hear. I haven't heard much about the animal shelter lately, for whatever reason. So somebody stopped that leak. You know, I haven't heard some other things around the community lately, and so somebody's addressing those things. So thank you for what you do and recognize that sometimes people don't always give you a pat on the back, but what we know and what we hear is really important, and what we don't hear is just as important. So you make the difference. So thank you.
Thank you, sir. And of course, I just hold a compass, they're out there doing that work and giving the guidance to my guys and gals, so I really appreciate them doing that. The shelter, I'm really amazed that Facebook, they're taking pictures of the new adopted folks, and they're smiling, and there's that little dog and the little comments. It's really neat. So with that, I think I'm real proud of what we're doing. Mr. Madrid, thank you for your support.
Thank you, Chief.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, well, one final, just as an aside, I've always wondered why, you know, we have, at the end of the meeting, we have reports from the City Manager and the City Attorney and, you know, why we don't have an opportunity for the Police Chief to give a report as part of the formal agenda.
He is part of it when, with the manager, that is part of our, even though he doesn't appear on here, but we, the manager will ask him to come up and give his report best as such, so.
Okay, well, I would actually like to hear from him a little more often, you know, just on when we have time to go into more, you know, detail about what's going on in the city, you know, just come up and give us a report on that. We hear from him far too infrequently during these meetings.
On the, on another note, on the next meeting, it's March 13th, Renee, I did the first annual report that we've ever presented, ever. It's a debut, and Mr. Madrid's let that include it, but it'll be giving you the good things we did during the year and the crime rates, which are really looking good, 18 over 17. I'm really pleased with it, and other things. So you'll see that, and it'll be put on the website too eventually after I brief you off.
Thank you, Chief.
Who's my reporter?
Thank you. Mayor Pro Tim Clark.
Oh, I was going to say a couple of things to my fellow Commissioners. At some point in the next month or so, I would like to have us complete the discussion that Mayor, ex-Major Green had put up about working and living in downtown buildings, downtown commercial buildings. We never came to a resolution on that. So I'll be thinking about maybe how we'd like to see that look, and combined with that is kind of what this city can do to help support the revitalization of downtown. I know we've done LITA, that would be another part of it, and if there's other things that we think could be done, and including all of the downtowns like Austin Street, et cetera, it's not just the Main Street and Broadway. So if you give yourselves a couple of weeks to think about it, then you're not just having to come in and have a chat with me for three days. And, you know, this also includes the chief and the layer, and, you know, I mean, just what do we envision? And the other thing is, I just want to say, I do dig the brown on the building. I think it really cleaned up nice. It really did. And thank you. And thank you, Manager Madrid. You've gotten an awful lot being dumped on your plate very quickly, and I think you're doing an extraordinary job.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
Commissioner Baca.
I've got a couple of things. I was wondering if something you could think about, Mr. Madrid, is we've got a lot of people that walk up and down Murray Street by the golf course. And between gate and, I believe it's a cobra, there's any way we could, within the future, even if it's a couple of days or whatever, some sort of lighting and maybe even a sidewalk or something, just between all the kids and the adults that do walk up and down that avenue?
That's a good point. That's to move ahead.
Okay.
Thank you. Commissioner Zagetti.
I have to agree with Commissioner Baca. We drive that stretch all the time, and it is, it's hard to see, and even the deer actually like to cut across over there, and you don't want to hit one, because I have, and it does major bad things to your vehicle.
I wish you wanted a new vehicle.
Other than that, I've got some comments, but they can wait for another meeting.
Thank you. Commissioner Hessler.
Thank you. The only thing I have to report is that Tracy Berman and I were at legislative session last Monday on colonialist issues. We sat at the roundtable with the Governor. We were there with other municipalities and people that are in the colonialist program, and we got a big support that she would continue the funding, correct, Tracy?
Right.
We didn't get to talk to her personally, other than sitting at the table because she was quite busy, but it was a nice visit. It was freezing. You know, we got up there on Sunday afternoon and Sunday, Monday morning, early morning, I looked out the window and we're covered with snow. So it was kind of an exciting time. Also, on Tuesday, Chief Aragon and I were invited to speak regarding our city at the Knights of Columbus through the Catholic Church that the men gather every month. And so we were asked to speak and just kind of give ideas and thoughts about what was happening in our city and crime and whatnot. And I, you know, we didn't have, excuse me, we didn't have a big audience, but I think we did justice too and got a lot of questions and a lot of people interested in what was going on. And that's all I have to report. Is there anything else? Attorney Rubin, I forgot you.
I always said something, I have a report, but I didn't say anyway.
Yes, you did have a report. I read your mind, okay. At this time, our next item on the agenda is under KK1 Executive Session, the purchase, acquisition, or disposal of rural property at 450 West Riverside pursuant to 10-15-188. Do I have a motion to go into executive session? I have a move in a second right away. Is there any further discussion? Madam Clerk, would you please call roll?
Honorable Senator Wadehead?
Aye.
Honorable Ralph Hensler?
Yes.
Honorable Kathy Clark?
Yes.
Honorable Paul Baca?
Yes.
Honorable George Zagetti?
Yes.
Motion carries, and we will go into executive session after a brief break for my fellow Commissioners, if they would like.